Good evening. I will call to order the meeting of the Board of Education for Thursday, November 16, 2023. We'll begin this meeting with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Fernandino, Totavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. With that, we will have Mr. Andre Dionysian to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. For those who would like to participate, please.
All right, please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to our distinguished Burbank High School alumni, Mr. Dionysian. It's good to see you as always. You now seem to be coming to our meetings more and more, so I figured I'd give you a little bit of a role in one. So help pick up a bucket, so to speak. So, thank you, welcome. With that, Ms. Kitario, can we get a roll call at this time?
Member Tabet?
Present.
Member Ponser Campar?
Present.
Clerk Aga Konian?
Present.
Vice President Weisberg?
Present.
President Ferguson?
Present. Thank you, Ms. Kitario. We do have all five members present, so we do have the ability to move forward with the business of the meeting. With that, we will move to item number six, adjustments to the agenda. Do I have any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none from staff, any from my colleagues? Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, items for future agendas. See, nope, maybe? Face, don't know. Yeah, so, so we did, go ahead, Dr. Weisberg.
I think this is the right place. I want to talk about, less about a future agenda, but more, I guess, a future agenda in and of itself, so that we make sure we have a meeting specifically about the FICMAT report and its findings. Want to make sure that we continue with the transparency that we have already put into play. So that's a meeting in and of itself, but also an agenda.
Okay, without objection, we'll have that go to exec. Any other further questions? Seeing none, I do want to take a moment and just acknowledge the presence of Vice Mayor Schultz, who is in the audience tonight, so just wanted to say hello and welcome to our meeting. We're grateful to have you. With that, we will go to our next item, which is recognitions, our presentations and recognitions. We do have a number of presentations on that front, so with that, I will recognize Ms. Sharon Cuseo, who will be, our superintendent will be pitch hitting for.
There you go. Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce Carolyn Solberg, who is here on behalf of Arts and Ed Foundation.
Good evening. My name's Carolyn Solberg, and I'm the grants and giving chair for the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, and we are thrilled to be here tonight. Thank you so much for having us. We are here to share with you what our wonderful Burbank community has been able to provide for students this year. But before I begin, we wanted to take a moment because we have so many staff and principals and teachers and district members that attended our state of the schools, and we really appreciate the time you took out. We know it was a school night, and we wanted to say once more that we really appreciate your being there. So, thank you very much. This year, because of the tremendous support of our community, we awarded $100,000 in grants to Burbank schools. I'd like to highlight one of those supporters, Sylvia Nielsen. Sylvia was a music teacher in Burbank schools, and she still lives in this community. Her husband, Tak Aoka, was an artist, and sadly, we lost him last year. But to honor his memory, Sylvia partnered with us to put an art show and sell some of his paintings. The proceeds from that sale contributed to some of the music grants we were able to give away this year. Sylvia is here with us in the evening. Can you stand up a minute? As I announce your school's grant, could you please join me up here? Washington Elementary School. Funding was provided for materials for building structures to be used in second grade classes for collaboration projects with the Language Enriched Autism Program. Roosevelt Elementary School. Funding was provided for math toolkits for fourth and fifth grades and a comprehensive literacy software program for special education. Bret Hart Elementary School. Funding was provided for RTI materials, math manipulatives for kindergarten classes, and funding towards a clay consultant. Disney Elementary School. Funding was provided for music and dance instruction for kindergarten through fifth grades. Miller Elementary School. Funding was provided to expand the decodable text library for first graders, a hands-on phonics magnet set for second, also for first graders, and RTI materials for kindergarten through second grades. Edison Elementary School. Funding was provided for cameras for their art wheel and Native American historical set of books for fifth grade. Providencia Elementary School. Funding was provided for books to diversify their libraries in kindergarten through fifth grades and for multicultural dance and music assemblies and science assemblies for the whole school. Emerson Elementary School. Funding was provided for hands-on materials to help RTI students with phonics decoding and vocabulary development, equipment to help those in transitional kindergarten with building fine and gross motor skills, a classroom easel, and expanding the library to meet the needs of gate students. Jefferson Elementary School. Funding was provided for a projector that utilizes interactive technology. Stevenson Elementary School. Funding was provided for books and supplies for the One Book One School Program. Huarete Middle School. Funding was provided for pocket lab classroom science sensors that allow students to collect data from labs and engineering for design challenges, as well as training for the teachers on how to use those sensors. Luther Middle School. Funding was provided for tables and benches for their outdoor classroom, biographies of mathematicians and scientists for their math department to utilize, funds toward upgrading the auditorium sound system, instruments for band and orchestra, and help with their library refresh. Muir Middle School. Funding was provided for instruments and coaching for band and orchestra. Funds were provided to expand and diversify classroom libraries and for furniture for a meeting room for students in the counseling office. Community Day School. Funding was given for a visiting artist's monthly program provided by the Music Center, which focuses on cultures and traditions from around the world. Burroughs High School. Funding was provided for ovens for culinary arts, digital cameras, furniture for their peer mentoring classroom, risers for choir, art supplies and books for the AP African-American Studies class, art supplies for fine arts, stagecraft work kits, and instruments for orchestra. Burbank High School. Funding was provided for stage lights, music stands, and equipment for halftime band shows, a baritone saxophone, and color guard equipment. This was all made possible because families in Burbank are committed to donating $10 a month, or $25 a month, or $50 a month. Those donations make this possible. This is made possible because businesses in Burbank support the schools through their sponsorship and their donations. So we want to acknowledge the incredible support we have gotten from Burbank to make all of this possible. Now, I'd like to invite up our Chair, Brenda Eterbeek, and our Vice Chair, Jenna LaRiga.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to present Burbank Unified with our annual check. Very large check, both physically and figuratively. We are so proud to support really the vision of all of these incredible educators and visionaries in this room and not in this room. And so, we invite all of you to come in. We're going to take a picture if you guys wouldn't mind joining us. So, thank you so much.
Turn around, turn around.
Sylvia.
There you go.
Sylvia, can we stand right back?
I don't want to be in that.
We're going to go backwards.
Sorry. So now, sorry, some people, we're going to have to switch. This is my ear, my ear. Ten of us go to the left. We can see. I like it better back here, it's great, it's so comfy. That'd be like.
Yes. No, there. Three, really?
One, two. One, two.
Thank you very much.
Next time, we're going to have a one deal.
Not that it's the official non-profit.
Good job, everybody. Oh, my gosh. Asking money.
So, getting my colleagues back to the dais so that way we can comment before the honorable Chair and Vice Chair leave us, and certainly to get on with the rest of the business of the meeting. I want to just go maybe to my board colleagues to see if they have any commentary on this obviously major donation every year, but want to look to my left, Ms. Tabet.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Thank you to BAEF for your love and determination to do good things for our kids and our community. Oh, you can.
Dr. Aga Konian, can you please get back so that way you're not interrupting Ms. Tabet's comments? Thank you.
Mrs. Eterbeek is missing out on my amazing words. I just wanted to thank the BAEF for your dedication and the love you show for our students and staff. I know how much work you put into what you do for us each and every year, and this is that shining moment when all the hard work and the sweat equity that you, well, forget the sweat equity, the real sweat sometimes, that you put in to make sure that we have funds and we have great things happening for our students at all of our schools. So, so much appreciation and love for you all for making Burbank Unified just that much better than the rest of the school districts around. It's appreciated. Thank you. Or maybe that much better, I don't know.
Thank you. Ms. Ponser Campar.
Thank you. Thank you very much to BAEF. That's a humongous check, and just hearing all the number, the projects and the variety of projects that you're funding is really exciting. And I know, I do want to give a special shout out to Ms. Solberg, who reminds me when folks reach out to me trying to figure out how to raise money, that there are often grant cycles that they can apply to. So, it was really great to hear at least one of those projects that I knew about getting funded by BAEF. So, thank you for, for funding every school, for, for taking an equity lens to it. It's really important, and it really means a big difference to our schools and our students. So, thank you.
Dr. Aga Konian.
So, I'll say it again, I've said it in the past, for someone who does this for a living, I understand how difficult it is, and you're all volunteers, that's another part of this. And I can tell you that this year, it's been, at least in the world of philanthropy, it's been a difficult year, especially what's happening with the stock market and interest rates. So, to come with a $100,000 check, it's fantastic. And, and I am so proud of all the work you do, but now that also, since the last meeting, we've kind of made this the official nonprofit, right, for the district to go to, I'm talking to you, well, not yet, but we're there almost, you know, people out there, endowments, right? $1 million, oh, we have a problem with people. Let's, let's start having those conversations. But again, thank you, this is much needed, and, you know, and I hope that people are watching, you know, will go to the website, make a donation, you can make monthly payments, right? You don't have to just give a lump sum. But again, to have this and all these individuals, to be here, it means the world to us, to me. Thank you very much for all you do.
Dr. Weisberg. Yeah, sorry, somebody slipped middle school photos of me onto the dais.
I just saw a picture of middle school Steve Ferguson, and I'm not sure I'll ever be the same again. That is glorious.
If he only knew.
Shell shocked, but I'm going to regain my composure. Just a huge thank you. All the events that you host that I've had a chance to attend, it's not just for a good cause, they're always so full of like joy and fun and enthusiasm, because I feel like we're all, we all, we all know why we're there. And I think in a universe where very few things unite people, the fact that we're all united to provide support financially and otherwise to our schools and our teachers and our kiddos is pretty inspiring and always helpful to remember there's lots of good in the world. So, just a huge thank you, and I hope our continued partnership just grows and grows, including tonight and onward. And as always, I know you have partners and all of us up here. So, thank you to every single one of you and all the people that we don't see right now.
Thank you so much, and thank you to my board colleagues, obviously, for recognizing what I know to be, you know, a very special relationship, and, and we have been working for years. Prior to this foundation, but as, as Dr. Weisberg said, there's, there's a ton of people who contribute to this work. Everybody from the $5 donor to your governance committee. It does exist, I've heard of it, you know, just always, always meeting. So, there is a ton of work that it takes to keep a modern nonprofit operating, right, on behalf of our schools, and to keep it in line with the mission, with a bunch of folks who are elected to try and set priorities, that's a hard thing to walk and chew gum at the same time, it really is. To get people excited about, hey, we're going to go, you know, raise money for a certain curriculum, just telling. It, it's a really challenging job. So, when we get a check like this for $100,000 in a moment where you guys are juggling all the things of coming together from two organizations, marrying that culture, which takes time, and then moving it into a fundraising mission, it's huge. On top of that, we will be hopefully bringing forward very soon what we have now created board policy to establish, which is a process by which there will be a formal MOU brought for the consideration of the board to partner and to officially recognize the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation as primary foundation for this district. This is a decades-long effort. Ms. Tabet has been a major part of moving this ball forward, and other board members, frankly, who aren't even here anymore, you know, who have come, served, and gone. So, entire, entire, this has been hard work, but we are bringing it home this year. We're getting it done. Why? Because this community now needs its part. It needs to raise its level of commitment to schools if we are going to get from the good to the great. And we've got capable partners who are capable of processing, maintaining the integrity of your donations. We found that partner, but it wasn't without a lot of work, and then they just raised $100K for us. So, we won't lose the check, thank you. That's the good part. And we will continue in just our gratitude and looking forward to formalizing this agreement, getting it done. It is certainly, you know, I know Ms. Tabet has worked again extensively on it, so I do want to give her all due credit, but so have I, and I'm like, we're getting this done. And so, Ms. Tabet actually gave a shout out, she's like, hey, like, we're finally getting it done. So, and from your golf tournament to now, what, what, what it has been. So, thank you, and thank you for your efforts to get it here, and again, thank you to all of you for your partnership and to all the school sites who benefit. Enjoy, and I hope it enriches instruction. With that, we will move to our student representatives unless, yeah, we'll do student representatives, and then we will go to our adjournments, and then I'll go to, quickly to the superintendent, yeah, we'll do the superintendent's report after that. Thank you, Mr. Hubble, and have a good rest of your evening. Sorry, got to fly by waves. So, with that, our student representatives, I will first recognize Isabella Nujarian from Monterey High School.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and our audience. We are currently in the middle of quarter two at Monterey, and we have been focusing a lot on Native American Heritage Month. Each Thursday, we have a student go on the announcements to educate us on different Indigenous tribes native to this area. We also have a beautiful bulletin board in the hallway. We have all learned a lot and like to find ways to respect everyone's culture. We would like to give a special honor to Sarah Gregori. She was at Monterey, she was the Monterey High School Noon Rotary Award winner. Sarah was in charge of creating a student activity for Veterans Day. She had an idea to have every student and staff write a note to our veterans using red, white, and blue post-its, and then we created a flag with it. It turned out beautiful, and Mr. Taylor, Assistant Principal, presented the flag to the Burbank chapter of the Veterans of Foreign, of Foreign Wars. Every student and staff participated, and it was a really proud moment. I brought some pictures with me to show you, since Sarah did such a great job. Next month, we are working on celebrating different holidays with some fun spirit days and finishing out the quarter strong. I have some great news about our campus. We have received the tables, and they have been assembled. We are working on umbrellas for those sunny days. As soon as they are done, and we will, I will bring some pictures and show you the campus. Mishraga has taken over our social media. If you would like to see more of what's happening at Monterey, you can follow us at MontereyHSBurbank on Instagram. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Dr. Weisberg.
So, I've been lucky enough to meet Milo, Mishraga's fabulous support dog.
We have been, thank you.
Oh, we, we have been, sorry. Could you talk a little bit about like what the dog does on campus? And I also want to say to Mishraga, like, I follow you guys on Instagram, one of my favorite follows.
Amen.
Good job, good job, good job. Can you talk a little bit about the dog and the amazing presence of Milo on campus?
He literally owns the campus, like, that's his campus. He just walks around, and whoever, he just, he knows who pets him, so he just like runs to you, dragging Mishraga, and he just runs to whoever he knows is going to pet him and show him his love, and he just strolls along campus. Yeah, it's very cute, and we get to babysit and run around with him, and if you're in Mishraga's office, he's always just napping or just running around in that little, little tiny room. It's very cute, yes.
He was a participant in our Student Affairs Committee meeting as well, so that's great. We had much representation there, so it was great, anyway. Oh, yes, so the majority of the board has now met Milo, that's, oh, no, oh, Paris, well, okay, they were there, we were, we were. We may need to recognize him with a, with a certificate. Actually, we're going to recognize him with a certificate, presidential prerogative, that's what we'll call him. Anyway, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Our next presentation will be from Paris Tesfu from John Burroughs High School. Great report. Oh, yes, thank you.
Good evening, President Steve Ferguson, distinguished school board members, Superintendent John Paramo, district staff, members of the community. I am Paris Tesfu, President of John Burroughs High School, and I am here to give my report on November 16, 2023. Starting with sports news, our fall sports are winding down and our winter sports are ramping up, some including boys' and girls' basketball, boys' and girls' soccer, girls' water polo. We're so excited to see what our students have in store for their season. In campus news, we are holding our Fall Food Festival for the fall semester tomorrow at lunch. Clubs around campus, as well as the respective classes in ASB, will be able to fundraise tomorrow. We're so excited for the huge turnout for the clubs. Moving on to performing arts, JBS Drama is holding their Fall Play Almost Maine tomorrow and Saturday at 7:00, as well as Sunday at 2:00 and 7:00. Come out and please support the arts. Next month, the VMA Dance Department, IMA, as well as the Drama Department are holding their annual Holiday Spectacular, A Holiday Carol, on December 8th, 9th, and 10th. Come and spread some holiday cheer. To talk a little bit about what our ASB is currently doing and looking forward to, junior class is selling Thanksgiving gams to fundraise. They'll be selling them at three price sets, $1, $5, and $8. ASB is also helping incoming freshmen by taking them on campus tours throughout the year. Before finals, ASB is celebrating the teachers, admin, and faculty through the student and faculty luncheon. They deserve all the thanks they can get. Before the semester ends, the Events Committee is holding the last spirit week of the semester, hoping to drum up a little bit more school spirit before finals takes us all out. We're also hoping to start the spring semester strong by preparing for our winter rally ASAP. We're excited to bring the school community together, as well as celebrating our winter sports, as well as other organizations on campus. I also wanted to take excessive, sorry, I also wanted to take a second to thank the BAEF. Your love and hard work has reached our campus, and we're eternally grateful for all you do. Thank you. And I can take any questions or comments.
You have no idea how much that meant to those folks back there, so just thank you for that, you know, that.
I, I truly can't like express in words how, how much the arts means to us and how, like, how much funding can just bring out so much in a student, like, just having their creativity unlocked really helps our community, and we're really thankful for it.
I have to say, I'm also just very thankful for you because you have been very consistent in that in your advocacy, because on the Student Affairs Committee, you offered that as well, that students just need spaces to go and to create. So, I want to thank you for kind of keeping that drum going, because for us, it keeps it central, and it, it's powerful when you weigh in. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Board colleagues. Dr. Weisberg.
Well, I just wanted to shout out some of the things that you brought up in the meeting. So, Paris was talking about not just performing arts, right, not just theater and music, but also yoga and pottery and just different opportunities for students to have a place to go to sort of blow off steam and express themselves. So, it's really clear how much you guys have made an impact at Burroughs and with Paris, and so also the, thank you, Paris, because it's not just about the suggestions, you actually had really tangible things which give us something to think about and work
No axe throwing included yet, but nothing, nothing dangerous. Ms. Tabet.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Aga Konian, who said to me just now, I need to state the obvious. He's referring to our Burbank-Burroughs football game, so congratulations. It was a great season. Your, your team, your team played well. Your team had a great season. Go Bears.
Thank you.
You are a class act.
Time and date, Thursday, May, November 16, 2023. It's been almost nine years. That's a first. That happened. Great things under this presidency. No, I'm just, so with that, and of course, Dr. Aga Konian.
Yeah, so, sorry, thank you for bringing that up. I do also want to mention that our Vice Mayor was there, Nick Schultz, he was part of the flipping the coin, and, and then I learned from him that we both played football in high school, so, but again, yeah, and, but thank you, it was a wonderful game, and, you know, this was our son's first football game, so he was very happy to be on the field, and, and he was on the Bulldog side that day, but, you know, but thank you, and, and I think the students, everyone, it was great, it's a great rivalry, but it was fun, and everyone went home happy, so that's the whole idea. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final Student Board Report comes from, and I have not, Andrene Bilboyan, right? Thank you. It's good to see you and welcome.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, distinguished board members, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and members of the Burbank community. My name is Andrene Bilboyan, and I am a senior at Burbank High School, as well as the ASB president. It is with pleasure that I provide a report this evening on all previous current and future BHS activities. To recap, we had, we had a very active week from October 23rd to October 27th. ASB announced our Spirit Week rally theme and publicized for the homecoming game against Burroughs. Monday kicked off as Zombie Day, where students, students came into school dressed in their PJs. Tuesday was Generation Day with freshmen, freshmen as babies, sophomores as toddlers, juniors as adults, and seniors as senior citizens. Wednesday was Athletes vs. Mathletes. Thursday was Rhyme Without Reason, encouraging students to dress up with a friend or in a group as things that rhyme but have no logical connection. For, for instance, a fairy and dairy. And Friday was the day of the pep rally, which was
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, distinguished Board members, Superintendent Paramo, district staff, and members of the Burbank community. My name is Andreique Bilboyan and I am a senior at Burbank High School, as well as the ASB President. It is with pleasure that I provide a report this evening on all previous current and future BHS activities. To recap, we had, we had a very active week from October twenty-third to October twenty-seventh. ASB announced our Spirit Week rally theme and publicized for the Homecoming Game against Burrows. Monday kicked off as Zombie Day where students, students came in to school, uh, dressed in their PJs. Tuesday was Generation Day with freshmen, freshmen as babies, sophomores as toddlers, juniors as adults, and seniors as senior citizens. Uh, Wednesday was Athletes vs. Mathletes. Uh, Thursday was Rhyme Without Reason, uh, encouraging students to dress up with a friend or in a group as things, um, that rhyme but have no logical connection. Uh, for, for instance, a fairy and dairy. Um, and Friday was the day of the pep rally, which was themed Halloween movies, where all the students gathered in the main gym and proudly wore their class colors or dressed up as characters from their respective class films. Um, as for the Homecoming Game against Burrows, uh, we don't talk about that. Um, and then, uh, in regards to our Performing Arts, on October twentieth, BHS Band performed a Symphony of Souls. October twenty-fourth was Marching Band's Burbank Bulldog Brigade. And on the same night, VMA performed a Night of Magic. Um, all of October consisted of college visits from all different types of schools, such as UCLA, NYU, UCSB, USC, and many others. I personally attended the, uh, USC College Visit. It was a very fun experience, um, super pleasant. I had a lot of my questions answered and even met, met and even had a one-on-one conversation with my admissions counselor from USC. Um, on November eighth, PTSA had a meeting in the school library. Um, I went to this meeting and wanted to share my experience. Um, it was very nice. Uh, they created a very welcoming and positive environment in the association. Uh, you could tell, you could feel it in the room during their meetings. Um, I was pleasantly surprised when I saw a lot of members that were parents of classmates that I've had for years. Um, and you could tell that the group is really passionate about improving our campus for students, teachers, and the community as a whole. Um, November ninth, we had multiple events going on. Uh, we held a FAFSA workshop for students and their families who are preparing for college. Um, there was also a CIF Sportsmanship Workshop for student athletes, coaches, and all else who wanted to join. And alongside the workshops, uh, BHS hosted a baseball game. In addition to the game and supporting our baseball team, we also held ceremonies and honored our veterans. With current events, we are in the middle of a Kindness Week, with Monday being Mental Vacay, where students dress like their own vacation. Tuesday was Meaningful Friendships, um, where we matched with one or more friends. Um, yesterday was Be Kind to Your Teachers, so students dressed as their favorite teachers. Today was Powered by Kindness, so we all dressed up as superheroes. And, uh, tomorrow will be Funky Friday. Um, yesterday, November fifteenth, was our Senior Pan- Panoramic. Um, it started raining during our photo and I had my doubts about getting, uh, six hundred students in one place and under control, but we got the job done. Um, and then tomorrow, IMA will be performing their Swing Night performance. And on Friday and Saturday, BHS will be hosting our Fall Dance Show. Um, finally, as we head on to Thanksgiving break, our fall sports come to an end and our arts programs present some of their last performances of the year. Uh, in this process, ASB is preparing for the final month of the semester, as we will plan our last Spirit Week of the year and start working towards our Winter Rally, which will take, which will take place first thing, second semester. And then I can answer any questions or clarifications.
Thank you for your report. It's nice meeting you for, this is the first time we've encountered, but you've been busy doing things, so that's great to hear. Go ahead, Ms. Tabit.
Well, that's what I wanted to bring up. There was a reason why we didn't see you a couple of times. You want to share a little bit? Cause you know.
If you're comfortable.
Sure, um, a lot of, I think.
Oh, I thought there was a specific reason.
Yeah, one, one, one of them for sure was, uh, water polo. Um, so I didn't mention it because it's like, uh, mixed feelings about the season, but we ended up winning league, uh, which was really nice, yeah.
Okay, you went in the direction I wanted you to go. That's good.
Uh, we went on to CIF for Division Two. We went to round two and lost our game by only one goal. So still kind of fresh, so I didn't want to mention it in the report, but it was, it was a great season.
Way to traumatize Ms. Tabit.
No, they hadn't, you're being very, um, humble, yes, modest. You had a great season. You went to round two in Division Two. That's huge. And, and I really wanted to congratulate you and just, you weren't, you know, you just didn't decide to not come to a board meeting. You had a very important reason why you weren't there. And I believe your Vice President is your team, um, she works, she helps? No, yeah, team manager? Is that not true? I misunderstood that. My bad. Okay, I apologize. Um, you know, I get a lot of information, doesn't always come out right, so. Okay, well, congratulations and, and your win-loss record?
I think we were twenty-one and ten by the end of the season.
And did you beat the Bears?
No, we didn't.
Okay, Shar.
All right, thank you.
That's gonna be fifty Peace Builder pledges and a lot of work.
It's all good. I'm sure it was a great game.
I mean, she, she's determined, you know? Anyway, so, um, you represented our school district. And that's what Ms. Tabit, I think, more than anything, I'm echoing what she has to say there. Like, you made us proud. Um, and so, yeah, you get to miss a few board meetings for that. Um, and in fact, let's, let's hit your team here, uh, to recognize them for their work, because that's huge. It doesn't matter which school you come from, we know that, Ms. Tabit knows that too. Um, because Ms. Tabit, a few meetings ago, was fighting to make sure that even though we're gonna be districted board members, we're fighting for all schools. Um, you have no idea how much pride you bring us. No idea when you make those achievements, really, truly. I don't even know you and I'm proud that you're a part of this community with me.
Thank you.
You know, so.
So we need to bring the Bears football team in too.
Yes, we'll do all the things and Ms. Tabit will handle that presentation personally. And I will assist with that, so, um, but again, we celebrate the contributions of all of our athletic programs, all of our activities. Um, because it, and sometimes it's, it's big, sometimes it's fast, like water polo. Sometimes it's, it's slow work and studying. So just thank you very much. Really appreciate your report and it's great to, uh, interact with you, at least for the first time.
Thank you likewise.
Thank you very much. With that, that will wrap. You're all good to go.
And I, I want, I had a.
All right, man. You do this every single time, so I'm gonna call in order of seniority. If you don't call during that time, I'm not gonna recognize you. You only have two more meetings with me, but you know, that will be the case. And I'm not doing one more.
Finally, nice to meet you. Is it Bilboyan or Bilboyan?
Bilboyan.
Bilboyan.
Nice to meet you.
Um, nice to meet you. So I, quick question, so you said you were talking to USC people. So how was the overall experience when it comes to, you know, the whole recruitment, talking to counselors?
It was really nice. Um, we had, I think it was about a one-hour session. A bunch of students like came to the, I think it was the computer lab. Um, he kind of just went through like a quick slides presentation and it was just qua- constant like questions and answers. And like, either it was from my questions that I personally asked that I got my answers from, or it was another students that I got my answers from. Um, and it was right before the application deadline, so it was super helpful to hear all those answers. And then he even stayed at the end of it to like have those one-on-one conversations with whoever wants to like talk to him.
And do you have a major yet or not?
I wanna do Political Science.
Don't threaten us with a good time. Let's go. Okay. Excellent. So we're gonna talk more about his choices after, after high school, uh, when he gets there. Uh, so with that, thank you very much, uh, and, and we'll move on, uh, happily, after really solid reports. Uh, you know, two adjournments. Um, you know, we have, uh, received a number of adjournment requests and that we've honored, you know, um, because we, it takes all members of our community, uh, to make the school district great. And when we lose people, uh, we want to take moment, uh, to, one, send our deepest condolences and our, our thoughts and our wishes for, for, for grace and for healing in the loss of folks, um, on behalf of our district. So with that, we will begin with, uh, Janet Sterns, uh, who at eighty years old passed away on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Janet was born in Burbank on November seventh, nineteen forty-two, as, and was a lifelong Burbank resident. Uh, she attended Burbank Schools, starting in Central Elementary School, which is now Disney Elementary School. Uh, we had to do a little bit of research to make sure that we, you know, knew that, which was really fun, uh, digging into Burbank history. Uh, and promoting, uh, to Jordan Junior High School, now Dolores Worthen Middle School, uh, and graduated from John Burrows High School in nineteen sixty. All three of her kids, uh, Tim, Elise, and Katie are also alumni of the Burbank Unified School District. Uh, at the age of fifty, after raising her children, Janet decided to go to college, uh, something that she had always wanted to do. She received her BS in Psychology, her Bachelor of Science in Psychology, from CSUN, and then went on to receive her MA, or her Masters, uh, in Marriage and Family Therapy from Fuller Seminary. She spent her late fifties and sixties as a therapist and absolutely loved her job. Uh, Janet was known to be a woman of God and her faith was very important to her. She was selfless and put others before herself. Uh, this was especially true when it came to her family. Besides her children, Janet is survived by her husband of sixty years, Ron Sterns, who is an incredible character, uh, and an amazing human, um, and seven grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Uh, she was loved very much by all who knew her and is missed every single day. Um, the Sterns family, uh, has been active for years in youth sports, uh, has been a part of our business community, Unique Vintage, uh, and has contributed time and time again, um, to ensuring that people have good experiences in these schools. And, uh, they're all alumni and so they are, you know, in their own way, uh, products of us and, and we're so sad, uh, to learn of, of their loss. And we express our sincerest condolences. Um, our next adjournment will be for the passing of Kara Takuchi. Um, Kara Takuchi was a Monterey High School student who, uh, was well-liked by peers and staff. As a student, she worked hard to build, uh, she worked hard and built positive relationships with teachers and other students. Harder than it looks at times. She preserved, uh, she persevered through online learning and came back to us after the pandemic and graduated in two thousand twenty-one. Some of the teachers still use some of her assignments as what the exceptional work should look like. She was that student. Uh, the staff who remember Kara are saddened to hear about, uh, about her loss and send positive thoughts, uh, to her friends and family. No doubt Monterey is a, a tight-knit community. And so, uh, to the entire Monterey community and to the family, again, our, our sincerest thoughts and our best wishes. And last is, uh, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Tommy Sanchez. Tommy Sanchez, uh, was a connector. Uh, as a student at Burbank High, he was outgoing and a friend to all. Um, uh, his, his big smile and positive energy infected a room and could always be counted on to lift the spirits of those around him. Uh, he treated his friends and his families with respect. And after stepping away from football his senior year in twenty seventeen, he was still a part of team pictures and events, uh, a testament to just how loved he was by his teammates and his friends. So we will adjourn, uh, tonight's memory in, uh, tonight's meeting in memory of all three of these individuals. Um, you know, it's so funny because these, some of these, uh, the background to this, uh, these adjournments are offered by loved ones. And so to hear how they are remembered by loved ones is such a powerful moment that we're very proud to share in as a board. So with that, uh, we will wrap and we will adjourn in, in memory for those folks. Uh, and I'm going to take just a point of privilege and then go to the Superintendent first, uh, for one more presentation before we go to public comment, if that's okay with my board colleagues? Great.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Dr. Peter Knappich to come to the podium to recognize a few people.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ferguson, Vice President, Dr. Weisberg, Board Members, and the Burbank School Community. It's with great pleasure this evening that I bring to you, to the Board of Education, a very special recognition. Thanks to Mr. Jonathan Bloodwuff Lopez, we will be applying for the Title VI Indian Education Grant funded by the federal government. I really appreciate Mr. Lopez bringing this to my attention and our attention. And this will be a whole new arena for me and I'm willing to learn and take care of the business at hand. Thanks to Mr. Lopez, I also asked the Los Angeles County Office of Education to share this information with all school districts in LA County. In this way, everyone has an opportunity to apply. In January, we will begin the work and start the grant and involve all of our families who notified me that they are a registered, they are registered with a tribe, either state or federal, or an Alaskan native. I also want to share with the Board that because of Mr. Lopez's efforts, there are numerous families here in the community who are currently not registered, who are going to go ahead and seek registration with a state or federally funded recognized tribe. With that, I'd like to welcome Mr. Lopez to the podium and share a few words. Mr. Lopez.
I'd like to, um, hello, hello, yeah, yeah, sorry. I'd like to, uh, thank Peter for, um, helping me on this journey. It's been a, a long journey to get this, um, rolling for my daughter. So I appreciate that and I appreciate you guys. Thank you and, um, uh, I hope this isn't just like the only thing that happens because I hope it, 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 it helps, uh, educate other kids that aren't indigenous, because this is for just indigenous kids. But, um, I'm also doing, uh, I'm a, I'm a documentary filmmaker here, so I'm also doing a docu-series about, um, every tribe on Turtle, Turtle Island, which is United States, Canada, uh, what is it? Sorry, um, South, South America. Um, so yeah, um, I'm going to different school districts and, um, speaking to them to implement it into their programs. So I hope you guys, uh, would be willing to do that as well. I've been trying to contact you guys for a while, but I've been going back and forth. But, uh, every school district I speak to, they're, they're welcoming it with open arms and they're, they're all for it. So I hope you guys are as well. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Knappich.
Before you go, I'd like to invite Mr. Ferguson, Superintendent Paramo, down to the podium here so we can provide a certificate.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know if you want to do comments first.
Uh, why don't, uh, we're just gonna take the quick photo and then we'll be back.
Okay.
Congratulations. Thank you for helping us with this.
That is glorious, truly.
If you, if you can, just spread, uh, my docu-series around. It's called They Can't Kill Us. And you can find us anywhere.
Thank you very much. So, so while cashews are passed and, um, I'm just gonna go to Ms. Tabit for her, for comments really from the board. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot and say, oh, but, yeah, okay.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this to us. I'm sorry it was difficult to get to us. I'm looking forward to hearing, as we go through this, yeah, um, what this means, um, for our students and what opportunities are gonna be open to them. So that'll be exciting. So don't disappear on us.
Yeah.
Keep, keep us up to date and coming back.
Oh, I will, yeah.
And thank you for your, your time.
Thank you.
It's appreciated.
Uh, Ms. Ponser Campcar.
There we go. Uh, Mr. Lopez, thank you for coming and for bringing this to us. Um, you called in during our Administrative Affairs Meeting, I think.
Yeah.
Way back when.
Yeah.
And we were like, what? How, is, is there money somewhere for kids who need it? Let's go, let's go find that out. And I know Dr. Knappich really chased it down and I'm really excited to hear that we're sharing that knowledge with the rest of the county. I think that's awesome. Um, and just thank you for your advocacy on behalf of not only your, your student, but on behalf of all Indigenous students.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Dr. Agarconian.
Hey. Um, thank you very much. I think, um, a lot of people still need to learn about the history, about the past. So we need more people like you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Dr. Weisberg.
Uh, echoing everybody else, but it gave me a chance to learn about it. So I got to do a deep dive and read all about it and send Dr. Knappich and Dr. Paramo like ten thousand links to look at.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a lot.
There's, there's a lot, but it's also something that we need to know and other districts need to know. So I hope you're, I mean, you've created advocacy that moves past Burbank Unified. It's super huge. I know that we'll want to talk to you more about your docu-series. It sounds really, really interesting and just, you know, it, it's one thing to just sort of show up for your kiddo. It's another thing to advocate for people you, you don't yet know. So it's a, it's a great example to set and it shows that when you care about something, you show up and you speak to it and then change can happen. So, uh, share, Ms. Ponser Campcars, when we heard you at the, was it Academic Affairs or wherever? Whatever the meeting was where we heard you, I was like, huh! And thus began the journey. So, um, thank you to Dr. Knappich for jumping on it and making sure that we moved as fast as we possibly could and please come back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we spoke briefly at the podium, but, uh, I will say, one, let's secure a meeting. Let's sit down and actually have a time to talk. Um, so, one, uh, it, it's, it's good feedback, right? For us to hear it was difficult to get to this point. So there should be a simple email address, you know, newideas@burbankusd.org, right? That's monitored. If we can get to that phase and get that on the website, that'd be great. Uh, this was a new idea that's gonna help others.
Yes.
Right? And, and we could have missed out on it. So I don't want, and I'm not, you know, upset with staff, like we, we got on top of it, we made it happen, so thank you. That's a testament, but it's also a testament to your dedication to the concept. So just so happy to connect with you, and thank you for taking the time to advocate for, for our kids.
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys spreading the word. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We'll circle back soon. If, Mr. Knappik, if we could get his information, if you don't already have it. And I will also say, the magic of governance. Look at that, people calling in, new ideas, love it. Anyway, it does exist. Okay, thank you so much. And Dr. Knappik, go ahead.
And if I might, I have one more that I'd like to bring forward to the Board. I'd like to invite Mrs. Lenora Aguilera to the podium, who's going to make a special request to the Board.
I'm going to ask that that come back during public comment, if I can. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, yeah, no, no. We, I had, I had heard about a request that was coming in, so I just think it's probably more in order during the public comment period than anything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And Ms. Aguilera, if that's okay, thank you so much. I just want to make sure we're, we're maintaining regular order for the meeting, so that way we don't get in trouble. With that, so, sorry, Dr. Knappik, that was a little shocking. With that, we will go to public comment. There are a number of people waiting, so I want to get to those folks. We do have a virtual public comment speaker, so I will have them on the wait, and they will go after the in-person speaker. So at this time, I want to recognize agenda item speaker. So this is going to be the period of public comment for agenda items only. And then I will ask if it's possible to move up the second period of public comment, which is the non-agenda items after that. Does that work for everybody? Okay, then we'll do that. That way we can wrap up public comment. I see folks who are here, and thank you. You've had a long day as it is. Thank you again. Don't hurt us. Anyway, so with that, we'll go to the first, our honorable Vice Mayor, Nick Schultz, followed by Joan Becker and Debbie Winstone.
Well, good evening. Let me make sure everyone can hear me vertically challenged or gifted, I don't know. Good evening, President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, esteemed members of the BUSD Board of Education, Superintendent Paramo, and very talented staff. My name is Nick Schultz. I have the privilege of serving as the Vice Mayor for the City of Burbank. Before I go on, I'm, I am commenting tonight regarding Agenda Item 12I, but I did want to mention that I am here in my individual capacity. I'm not authorized to speak for the Council. I am simply here as Nick Schultz, member of the community. I do fully support Agenda Item 12I, which would revise the Board's meeting calendar to reinstate the Board meeting for December 7, 2023. I'd like to give a little context as to why. Now, as you all know, on Tuesday evening, in what was supposed to be our planned joint meeting with the City Council, the Council, as part of its, of its regularly scheduled meeting, discussed the reasons for the postponement. Since that meeting, regrettably, some in our community have promulgated a narrative that our institutions either cannot or will not work together. And in my opinion, there could be nothing further from the truth. I am here tonight to state unequivocally that I am invested in a collaborative and supportive relationship with this Board to address the items of common concern and of common interest to our community. And I can't speak for my colleagues, but I can tell you that I know them quite well. I've had a chance to see them on the campaign trail. I've heard them on the dais. I believe I know what is in their hearts and in their minds, and I believe that they share that commitment. And that is the reason that I ask you to approve Item 12I, because by having that December 7 meeting, I think it gives the joint subcommittee of the leadership of this body and the Council the opportunity to hammer out those agenda items and still have the hope of having that joint meeting before the end of the calendar year. I also want to note that to the extent that any member of this body takes any exception with comments made by members of the Council, all that I can say is to simply offer an assurance that in my heart and in my mind, we as a body on the Council are committed to continuing to build a relationship of honesty and open communication and trust and, yes, mutual respect. Are we perfect? No. No one is. But this is our opportunity to represent and to show the community what good governance, as you said, President Ferguson, is really all about. And it's about not shying away from a challenge, but coming together and finding an opportunity to find that common ground and do good. The last thing I will mention is I just want to give a special thank you to President Ferguson and Vice President Weisberg, who as part of the district's leadership team, along with Superintendent Paramo, have maintained very open and very honest and good lines of communication that I believe set a foundation for future success. The very last thing I will say, by the way, is it is not necessarily in Item 12I, but I would love to see this body talk about maybe setting a twice-a-year regular meeting with the Council during both the winter and summer breaks during BUSD school. With that, you all have a very long agenda. I thank you very much for your time, and I will let you get on with the business of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Joan, to Ms. Joan Becker. We'll have you next, followed by Debbie Winstone, and then Schlossman. Good evening, Ms. Becker.
Good evening. Thanks for moving us up, because I was falling asleep a little bit there. A long week of conferences. Good evening, Board members and district staff. My name is Joan Becker. I'm proud to be a fourth-grade teacher at Joaquin Miller Elementary. I come before you tonight to express my concern about the way our Apex fundraiser was impacted this year. This concern is shared by many teachers at Miller. As a classroom teacher, I can tell you that the Apex, that Apex is a program that excites students and teachers alike. The videos are meaningful. They are educational videos that teach PBIS-based leadership lessons. Recent themes included Aspire, Self-starter, Own It, New Day, and Energize. Apex combines the power of strong character curriculum with fitness. This year, the program was heavily modified. Videos were not allowed to be shown during instructional time, despite the fact they weren't designed to teach life skills and had no connection to fundraising. Apex leaders were not allowed in classrooms to share their enthusiasm or excite our students about lessons. The impact was that Miller's students did not engage with the program as they have in the past. The financial impact was significant. Overall funding dropped by around $11,000. After our Apex fees, Elementary, Miller Elementary received approximately $6,000 less than we did last year. This loss will result in less arts and science funding for our students, less monies for our library, and fewer monies reserved for next year's science camp, resulting in higher costs for our families and fewer scholarships offered. I'm not aware of how and why these changes were made to the Apex program. I'm hopeful that the decision will be reconsidered. Our students deserve the benefits of the Apex social-emotional learning and the arts and science programming it provides. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Becker. We'll move on to Ms. Winstone, followed by Schlossman. Good to see you, and thanks for putting up with our, our agenda.
I appreciate you making that change. Thank you. Good evening to our Board and district staff. My name is Debbie Winstone, and I am here on behalf of the staff of Miller Elementary, putting forward a request to name our newly refurbished auditorium to honor a couple who have gone above and beyond for our school for more than two decades. John Osif had a few careers before coming to BUSD, first as a graduate of the Air Force Academy and later a member of the Air Force. After retiring from the force, he received his law degree and became a successful attorney. But that wasn't enough, because there was one more higher calling, a teaching credential. We often tease John about what an underachiever he is. Mr. Osif came to Miller in 2001 as a fourth-grade teacher, and I can say I had the honor of working with him when I started at Miller and saw firsthand the impact he made on his students. It's a Miller, Miller urban myth that he retired in 2015, since upon his retirement, nearly eight years ago, he has been coming to our school daily to assist teachers and students, even going online with our fourth-grade classes during the pandemic. Sadly for us, his time at Miller has been reduced to only four days a week, a request from his wife, who has also just retired and would like to see her husband at least one day a work week. During his tenure, he was a dedicated teacher and team member, headed our science fair oratorical contests, supported our chorus, and luckily for us, wrote and directed annual plays for our fourth-grade students. For the few of us who write and put on plays for our classes, having John and Nancy as a support has made all the difference. I actually changed the date of my kinder play last year to perform after they came back into town from a vacation. There was no way I was doing it without an Osif in the building. Today, John and his wife Nancy have brought, bought and donated, through large sums of their own money, supplies to enable our teachers and students to put on performances, and I dare say rival some professional productions. John continues to build sets, guide our actors, buy endless props and supplies, and gives weekends and late afternoons of his own time, and his wife Nancy allows this. She has become a Miller theater arts widow. But the reason I am here tonight, and the reason Miller Elementary has an amazingly new, beautiful new auditorium of floors and seating, if you haven't seen it, please come by, is directly due to John and Nancy Osif. Refurbishing our 100-year-old auditorium became their passion project. John tirelessly advocated to the district administration, local businesses, and families for donations. He worked getting bids from contractors, supported and attended monthly Team Jaguar fundraiser meetings, which he still does. And finally, when it looked like it would take us another 100 years to raise the remaining funds, John and Nancy opened their wallet to donate tens of thousands of dollars to complete the project. If you want to know the exact amount, you can email me. John was there every step of the way, from the clearing out of the items in the auditorium this summer to going under the stage and getting stuck, putting in the hard labor and love that true educators do, even in retirement. John and Nancy have supported our school, our staff, and our students since 2001. We would like to be able to honor their selfless support and give our 100-year-old nameless building an actual name, the John and Nancy Osif Auditorium. So that is our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And per Board policy, that request has now been heard in a public comment, so thank you for that, and we'll refer it to, at a committee. I do believe we have one, two more cards. Mr. Schlossman, or Schlossman is what your card says, and then followed by, looks like Ms. Aguilera.
Mr. Ferguson, we recently had a family donate $50,000 to do anything you wanted with. What are you doing to thank that family? And did any of you even call him and say thank you? I'm just curious. Item number four says reconvene in public session pledge of allegiance. She went out of order today, and you read a Latin acknowledgement ahead of the flag salute, and I think that was improper. You weren't here for the earlier session, the closed session, and I talked about, well, let me, let me stop for a minute. I want everybody to notice that Board Member Weisberg did not stand for the flag salute, and that always gets my attention, and I don't think that that is right. I think that's a, really a violation of her oath to America. As I was saying, I came earlier, and I talked about an item on the agenda. I'm going to talk about it in a minute. But Ms. Weisberg said that I was ignorant and that I take up the Board's time. And when I come here and I give my opinion, which I'm invited to do, it's public comment, you don't have to agree with me. But I thought that was highly improper, and that's just more of what's going on under the nose of this superintendent, who doesn't say anything about, you know, the goings-on about this Board. And I think that it, it says a lot about the dysfunction and the disconnect between this Board and the community. One item on your agenda tonight, I think it's 12B, if I remember right, has to do with you spending up to $40,000 as an incentive for our teachers who are going to retire. And that doesn't sit well with me, because you're talking about a bond or a parcel tax or both in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and you seem to be wasteful. And $40,000 is a lot of money. So my question for you is, how many roof leaks can you repair with $40,000? How many air conditioners can you service with $40,000? And why would you ever entertain this motion? All I have to go on is this shitty report to the Board. There's no detail. I asked your secretary if I was missing something. She indicated I wasn't. I looked online. This is all there was. And it's really just a request to, to hand out up, you know, $1,000 each for up to 40 people who may want to retire. And I disagree with that, because you tell the community there's a teacher shortage, can't hire enough teachers, yet you're handing them $1,000 to push them out the door. So these are the types of things that just don't make sense to me. And, you know, you're going to get your time here after I go sit down to discredit me, to sing and dance, to justify your actions, and I've got to sit and listen to it while you all take turns telling me, not Agakanyan, because he hasn't said anything to me in years, but the rest of you will take turns telling how wrong I am and justify your actions. I don't know how this got here. I really don't. It's silly, ridiculous, it's wasteful, and these folks are going to retire anyway if they're close to the end of their career. I wish that you, we, all of you, everybody over here, doctor, 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 all these doctors, and there's such poor judgment going on. I'm not seeing anything dynamic coming from anybody. I'm really not. Thank you for your attention. And you're wagging your, your head like the dog in the back of the window. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There we go. With that, thank you, Mr. Schlossman, or Schlossman, as according to your card. Any other comments from members of the public? I will, I'm sorry, we'll go to Ms. Aguilera. Apologies for, I'm in deep trouble.
Often, there are not enough words to thank someone who's dedicated their career in making somewhere a better place. Good evening, School Board and the Burbank community. My name is Lenora Aguilera, and I'm the lead school nurse for our district. It is with great pleasure that I come to the Board to recommend that the library at Dolores Huerta Middle School be named in honor of Sharon Casseo. Mrs. Casseo has been an employee of Burbank Unified since 1989. She began her teaching career as a Spanish teacher at Dolores Huerta Middle School, where she taught for eight years. Sharon then transferred to John Burrows High School, where she taught Spanish for three additional years, before returning to Dolores Huerta, taking on a new role, serving as assistant principal. Recognizing Sharon's leadership qualities, she was promoted to principal at Huerta Middle School, where she served the students and community from July 2007 through June of 2011. Sharon's career journey changed paths again in July of 2011, when she was appointed as the Director of Instruction and Accountability, and in July of 2014, she assumed the role as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Assessment. Sharon's ongoing dedication to quality education and serving the needs of our Burbank community led her to being appointed to her final leadership role as Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services. We are fortunate to have had Sharon Casseo as an educator, mentor, and leader in our school district for 34 years. As she prepares with plans for retirement at the end of December, I again request that the Board consider naming the library at Dolores Huerta Middle School in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Aguilera. And, and we will, thank you. So a reminder to everybody, thank you for flying with us. No interruptions to the meeting are going to be tolerated moving forward. So we, we had a shout-out from the back of the room, and so that's why I'm notating, noting, is it came from, I believe, Mr. Schlossman, because he's the only one in the corner of that room, or of this room. So any further disruptions of the meeting will constitute a second warning. I will then ask you to leave the board meeting. It is the first time two board meetings ago that I asked, in I think probably 30 years, that a board president has had to ask somebody to leave, and, and that's not a distinction I like to enjoy. So please don't make me do it again. But I will, because this meeting is about the facilitation of the public business, not your agenda. With that, and, and you also, Mr. Schlossman, to plug your nose, go ahead, but you had the opportunity to go out and build a mandate, to sit in one of these chairs and to respond. You couldn't do it. We have, and we want it through public election. So you can go out at any time to build that mandate, to have as much response time as you want, but so far you haven't been able to do it. So don't judge or take it out on the people who were able to build the consensus of the community, to go out and govern on their behalf. With that, we do have one more virtual public comment speaker. Ms. Quiterio, is that individual on the queue? Thank you to Vanessa Moran. Thank you, Ms. Go ahead.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Ms. Moran, and I'm here today to-
I'm sorry, Ms. Moran, if we could, we're trying to turn- So don't judge or take it out on the people who were able to build the consensus of the community, to go out and govern on their behalf. With that, we do have one more virtual public comment speaker. Ms. Quiterio, is that individual on the queue? Thank you to Vanessa Moran. Thank you, Ms. Go ahead.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Vanessa Moran, and I'm here today--
I'm sorry. Ms. Moran, if we could, we're trying to turn up the volume here in chamber so we can hear you. Please be patient with us. Almost there?
Can you hear me there?
We need one more moment, just, we're checking. We can hear you a little bit, Ms. Moran, but we're working to see if it's a technical issue on our laptop. Control room, help us in whatever way you can. Ms. Moran, can you say hello again, just so we can--
Hello. Can you hear me?
That's much better. Thank you, everybody, in coordination for pulling that off. Ms. Moran, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Well, my name is Vanessa Moran, like I said, and I have a student at Luther Burbank Middle School. So I'm here today because I wanted to voice my concerns regarding the lack of safety measures we currently have in place. So far, we've had two shooting threats at our school just this year so far. These were luckily found out because of someone speaking up and saying something. With the way everything is in the world right now, and with mass shootings becoming so common, why aren't we doing more to keep our kids safe? Why don't the schools implement having bag checks, or using metal detectors, or pat downs? Government buildings, concert venues, or arenas, they all have these things in place. Why don't we have these in school? Parents and students alike shouldn't feel scared or nervous about going to school. If you want our kids to thrive, they need to feel safe and comfortable in their learning environment. Please, if you guys can do something like this and change our safety measures, I believe it'll make a difference in helping keep our kids safe. It's just, it's scary out there. Unfortunately nowadays, it's the common thing, and I feel just by having bag checks, or having metal detector ones, or anything like that, will help keep weapons out of our schools and keep our kids safe. There's no reason why we shouldn't feel safe sending our kids to school. And that's pretty much what I'm trying to say, just to see if you guys can try and consider adding new safety measures to our schools, because there's no reason why we should feel scared to send them to school. We shouldn't be having threats. You know, we've had two since the school year started. It's scary. I don't want to send my child to school, but I also don't have the option of learning long distance, the distance learning, because apparently, I think that was, I think it stopped this year for middle school, or last year. So it puts us in the position where I want my child to go to school, but sometimes she's nervous. I'm scared. It's just not a good thing. I shouldn't feel scared, parents shouldn't feel scared, our kids shouldn't feel scared or worried when they go to school. So I feel if you guys can implement certain safety measures like this, it would make a huge difference for the community and keeping our kids safer. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. And so what we will do is we are going to wrap public comment at this time. You are the last speaker, and then we will get you a response. So if you could just stay tuned with us, and not, if we can't kick her out of the, keep her in the Zoom room, so that way she can hear responses. We'll go to, any other speakers like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will go to Dr. Pramo for his responses.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, I honestly appreciate you coming in and speaking with such sincerity. I also appreciate the outreach this week. I am 100% confident that we will get a joint meeting scheduled soon, and I look forward to working with you, the council, and city staff. Ms. Becker, I don't have all the information. What I do know is that there was a complaint filed with the California Department of Ed, and I know that there are some limitations on fundraising during instructional minutes. I will work with our staff, specifically with Dr. Knappich. We'll get you some more information and see what, if anything, we can do. So I appreciate you coming in and letting us know. Debbie Winston, Lenora Aguilera, I could not agree more with your suggestions. There is specific board policy that addresses the naming of buildings. It requires a committee, and we are enthusiastically going to pursue that so that we can make those things happen. And Ms. Moran, I hear you. I struggle with this as well. I know that it sounds logical to the public, just look in the backpacks, make sure, do random checks. But we're really not allowed to do that unless there's reasonable suspicion. I can't just take every 10th kid that walks in and say, "Open your backpack." However, I am open to creative ideas on how to address this. We do a lot already. We, the two instances that were spoken of were dealt with swiftly and appropriately, and we took the maximum measures we could to ensure that the safety of our kids and our school came first, and we will continue to do that. I know that Mr. Hubbell has been working on creating an opportunity for parents to come together, to ask questions, and for us to listen, and to listen to suggestions on moving forward. We have worked diligently this last six months to put a lot of safety measures in place. We're committed to that. We are working on getting surveillance cameras at all of our schools. That is not the case at the moment, but we have dedicated funds to that, and we're trying to exhaust every measure we can to make sure our kids are safe. But I understand, as a parent, why you're fearful, and we will reach out, and I will make sure that you get a phone call back.
Thank you. To my board colleagues, Ms. Tabit.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all our speakers who came, not in any particular order or of importance, but to Vice Mayor Nick Schultz, who actually came down as Nick Schultz, not Vice Mayor Nick Schultz, my apologies, as a community member. But thank you for sharing your thoughts and opinions with us. It certainly mattered, I feel, and it was nice to hear and see you as well. Ms. Becker, I think the superintendent answered your question. So Ms. Weinstein and Lenora Aguilera, thank you both for coming down. I can't agree more. I happened to have pulled up the board policy on it. Mr. Frittoner and I, when he was on the board, worked on that policy, and yes, Superintendent Pramo is correct. Two board members, a committee of community members. So what happens is we put out a request for applications for people who want to be on that committee. We have a separate meeting. We discuss it, and ta-da, it happens, hopefully.
Ta-da is the technical word.
Yes. It says right here in board policy, and then ta-da. So--
Note that, City Council.
So that'll be, that'll be exciting. So hopefully, we can get that going on an agenda sooner, rather than later. I think that's about all I have for the moment. So thank you. I do want to say, though, community-wise, our student representatives brought it, and as we saw with BAF tonight, fundraising is a major part of our school communities, and it does take a lot of effort and a lot of work to raise those additional funds that we don't have as a school district, to make sure that our kids get some phenomenal programs. I, and there's all kinds going on. We get requests all the time, buy some Cs, buy this, help us with this, and happy to do so when I'm able. But one of my favorite fundraisers, and it was spectacular, and most of it is student-run, is the Night of Magic. Not only did the students perform, but they set that, the stage, and there was a whole atmosphere. So kudos to Burbank High's VMA. It was amazing what they do and put out for everybody who comes, and I highly encourage everybody to attend as many performances as you possibly can for performing groups. Not only is it nice to have an audience at things, but it helps raise funds for those groups, too. So thank you very much, and I look forward to many more.
Ms. Ponsner-Campcar.
Thank you, President Ferguson. So first, Ms. Weinstein and Ms. Aguilera, thank you for telling the stories of these really amazing people. As someone who is more relatively new to Burbank, even though I've worked with Ms. Casseo for the last year, like, it's always really great to hear the really deep history and deep connections to our community that folks have. I do remember seeing the donation from the Ossefs for the auditorium when it came through and thinking like, what is there that we can do to thank these folks? And so it was really exciting to hear the full story behind that. On the Apex fundraising, I know, I know that different elementary schools certainly implement PBIS in different ways, and maybe that's an issue for student affairs, but I think that might be something that we take up, is just, is how effective these various programs are, it sounds like, from our speaker, that she felt like it was a very effective, you know, reinforcement of the PBIS principles. So that might be interesting to look at. Ms. Moran, you know, I've emailed with a number of parents about what has happened at Luther over the last month or so, and, you know, as a fellow parent, I cannot imagine how that must feel, or I can only imagine what it must feel like, because we haven't had, since I have been a parent of a child in school, that kind of issue. But it is terrifying, and I want to recognize that, that I think where you're coming from in terms of your suggestions is a place of wanting to make sure your students protected, all students are protected. To Dr. Pramo's point, we can't really do random searches. We could do clear or mesh backpacks, but I don't know that those are super effective. There's a lot of research that says that metal detectors aren't very effective in terms of threat assessment. So I know particularly Dr. Weisberg and Mr. Ferguson have done quite a bit of work in terms of securing the outside of the school, though I know there are still issues at Luther with one particular door. But I think that's where we're trying to focus our attention, is how do we, how do we make sure that we're doing all that we can to make our schools safe and secure without making them feel, without making their security kind of technicalities really onerous, right? And feel, you know, not like a safe place to be, right? We don't want it to feel more unsafe because of our safety protocols. But I understand where you're coming from on that. And thank you to the rest of our speakers. I did want to have, I had a couple notes of some places I have been. Walt Disney Elementary hosted a multicultural night, and it was truly amazing, but what I really want to do is recognize my fellow board member, Dr. Aga Khanian, for coming and playing the Duduk, which I learned is the, like, Duduk is the Armenian flute, and it was beautiful. He's very, a very talented musician, is what I learned at multicultural night. My daughter was like, all the way up in front, like, eyes wide, watching all of the musical folks that came, but it was, it was really great, too, to see you there, supporting our school. I also visited Hart Elementary with Mr. Cantwell to take a look at the playground there. We got a note from a number of parents and the PTA asking about kind of playground equity, and I think it's something that we're, that is a big part of the facilities master plan that we're doing to understand all of the needs for our schools, but that we may have, you know, a way forward on some of these things, especially because Hart is part of a joint use agreement with the city. And then lastly, today was Mira United, and I want to really recognize that community. I was able to go to a couple of sessions, and I was, one, really impressed by the students. I was in an hour-long presentation by a Holocaust survivor, so like, a 91-year-old woman, and these seventh graders were quiet and attentive and asked great questions and were really thinking about what she had to say. And, you know, I think middle schoolers can get a bad rep sometimes, but they were really, it was really cool to see them truly trying to understand her story. And so I want to thank all the folks that came out for that, the Los Angeles Gay Men's Chorus, the Jewish Symphony. It was a real beautiful community event, and so many, many congratulations to Dr. Miller and team for pulling that off. Thank you.
Dr. Aga Khanian.
Thank you, President Ferguson. I do want to also thank our speakers coming forward, talking about naming people after, you know, all the work they've done. It means a lot. I think it also speaks volumes about our community and how well we know each other and how well we know our educators and the volunteers. These are members of the community, and even if they don't live here, they become part of our family. So thank you for doing that, and again, we do have a policy, and we will follow up on that. Thank you, Ms. Ponsner-Campcar, for recognizing me playing the Duduk. Apparently, I'm a hit on, someone posted the video, and I guess I have, what, 290 views or something? Now, I do want to take this opportunity to also thank Cheryl Rave, the PTA president for Disney. She's the one who invited me to the multicultural night. If you've never been to one of those, you should participate. Not only the food, but the families and, you know. And it was kind of interesting, because that night, it got, that's a night that, I don't know if you remember, last week got really suddenly cloudy and windy, and the song I was playing was called "The Dark Clouds." So it was kind of interesting, and everyone was looking at me going, "Oh." I'm like, "No, no, it wasn't my fault." But we also had other students and musicians, and it was just a beautiful celebration. And, you know, that event was really embodies what Burbank is about, a mosaic of different cultures, different ethnicities, communities, religions, backgrounds. And that's what I love about Burbank, and I think, you know, I know Dr. Knappich is very responsible for bringing forward some of these multicultural events, including the Buddy Bench, which we started, and I want to continue, and working with our city. But any of those who say we don't have a working relationship, let me just mention Buddy Bench. That was a donation from the city and the council members who have worked with us, donating their benches to our schools, just to start the conversation. I think sometimes people get too excited, they think too much into what's happening. As our vice mayor said it, you know, we are very close. I consider my council members my colleagues. I know them very well. I speak to them on a regular basis. And I think sometimes, I hope that people can just step back a little, think before they speak or write, publish things, know the whole story. But also, it doesn't hurt sometimes to reach out to members of both bodies and talk to them as well, you know? And I think that's important. I do want to also thank our vice mayor for putting this together so eloquently. As a member of our community, he is a stakeholder, just like the rest of us are. And, you know, I want to thank also, speaking of the council, I did attend the Clerk's Cup, as some of you remember, our former admin assist is Ms. Kimberly Clark, now is the city clerk. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but President Ferguson and back then Clerk, Zazad Mullins, are the ones who started the Clerk Cup, right?
That's right.
So for those of you who don't know what it is, it's basically a competition between Borough. It's not really a competition, it's a friendly competition, even though Borough's won this year. Borough's is just--
Ms. Tabit, you want to--
I'll find something.
Okay.
It's Borough's Night tonight, isn't it? But it's really about our students, pre-registering students. So we had a record-breaking 166 students pre-registered. Encourage them to get involved, and I think it's important, because, you know, they are the future, but also, you know, for them to get involved early, it does make a point. A lot of districts don't do this, and I think to have that many students register, pre-register, and get involved speaks volumes about our government and that we're in good hands. You know, despite some of our differences, I can tell you, when you see 166 pre-registered young people who are interested in the process, it gives me hope, right? So with that said, also, I did also attend the ANCA Armenian National Communities Gala with my colleague here, Ms. Weisberg. It was a wonderful event, great celebration, and that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanian. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our speakers, and also, it is Trans Awareness Week, so it's been an interesting week of learning from my students and from colleagues, and so I hope all of you have taken a minute to learn. To Mr. Schultz, in his personal capacity-- To Mr. Schultz, in his personal capacity, I appreciate so much you taking the time to reiterate our partnership. Dr. Aga Khanian said it best, lots of people love to sort of pile on and make something out of nothing, and so it was really wonderful to see all the conversations that were going on between Board President Ferguson and Vice Mayor Schultz and the mayor and everybody else to sort of reiterate our commitment and make sure that we move forward and continue to do right by our constituents, which is, at the end of the day, the single most important thing for every elected official in Burbank. Let me see what else. To Ms. Becker, thank you so much for bringing up the fundraiser. I know that there's often challenges between you, when we talk about using instructional time for fundraising, and also when students win certain things, how sometimes it can make other students feel. So I know that that conversation has come up, but I'm really glad you brought it forward so that we can continue to have a conversation, because financial equity is really important and something we're trying to figure out how to do on all of our campuses. So thank you for bringing that conversation to the forefront again. To Ms. Winston, yeah, the auditorium looks unbelievable, and to hear you speak so passionately, I hope you'll save your comments so that we can share them with the community, because they're powerful and they tell their story, like Ms. Pozner Camkar said really, really well. Same thing to Ms. Aguilera, I mean, what are you gonna, she's the best. And I would imagine for Ms. Cuseo, the library at Huerta, there's no better place than that library to celebrate her unbelievable contribution and lasting legacy here in BUSD. I also wanted to say, this is that most of you, I would assume all of you in this room, have at one point spoken to, emailed, been assisted by Ms. Keterio here, and I just wanted to say that she is not our secretary, she is the executive assistant to the Board of Education and the superintendent, which is a job that carries with it just an unbelievable amount of work, time, and effort. So we've all been blessed to have her in our lives, and the work she does for both the superintendent and the board is mostly unseen but deeply appreciated, so I'll stop making her feel awkward now. The other thing I wanted to say, and I was hoping that Mr. Cantwell might be able to speak a little bit about, when we get to that item on the agenda, about the early retirement. So a number of us in this room are going to a CSBA conference so that we can learn to be better board members and better stewards of public education. Hmm? Oh, and informed, all the things. But one of the sessions that is offered, that I noticed recently and made a note, Ms. Pozner Camkar and I both have Google Spreadsheets about all the sessions we're going to attend, no big deal, but one of them is called "Avoiding Fiscal Upheaval With Early Retirement Plans", and it's underneath "Governance Strategy and Practice." And one of the things it talks about is, they'll discuss early retirement incentives and other creative approaches school districts can implement to mitigate the pain of budgetary uncertainty. And so it can seem very much on face value like we're just throwing around money like Oprah, but it really is about giving people who know they're leaving the opportunity to let us know in advance so that we can begin the hunt for fabulous new members of the BUSD community. It's something that's done pretty regularly across the spectrum, and just alone, if you look at the fact that it's on the list of sessions that people can take as best practice, I think, says a lot. So I just wanted to let the public know that there's a lot more to it, and I know we're going to talk about it, so I just wanted to bring that up briefly. To Ms. Moran, I, we all understand, well, let me speak for myself. As a teacher, I know the fear that I bring into my classroom with me every day. I teach on the second floor of my classroom, and I've had kids ask me on numerous occasions if I think that they could survive them jumping out of the window. I teach in a classroom that's in windows from floor to ceiling, which is beautiful, but not when your students ask you to keep the blinds down because they're afraid of a school shooter. It's unbelievably difficult, and not something that, when I began my career as an educator, I ever thought I would have to do. And I've said it before, but the reason I choose not to stand for the pledge is because I don't feel like our country is standing up for our teachers and students right now. They're not passing meaningful gun legislation, they're not protecting our kids, and when they do, I will stand up again, because true patriotism means challenging your country while you still love and support it. So one of the things I would encourage you to do, Ms. Moran, is to reach out to your legislators and ask them to take a bold stand and to support gun control legislation specifically as it relates to semi-automatic weapons. You know, we continue to live in a town that is 17 miles in total, and we have 14 gun stores. That math is wrong, and that is why, at a very basic level, we fear when we go to school. I think we can be doing perhaps a better job of communicating all the safety measures that we've put into place. Board President Ferguson, over the summer, was really, really active in advocating for safety walkthroughs, which we've done through continued meetings with our council partners, the fire department, the police department, in order to figure out ways that we can both make our schools feel safe and also not make them feel like prisons. We know that a lot of the safety measures that are often suggested through nobody's fault also end up disproportionately affecting our students of color, which is not something that any of us want to do. So a couple of things that you mentioned, we did institute clear backpacks at some of our high school football games, let's think it's something we're going to continue to do. We're talking about putting those cameras up. We've spent a lot of time talking about those, as you pointed out, external fixes. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, but I think we can always regularly communicate. Oh, and the badges, too, not just at the high school level, in our middle school, making sure that our students are wearing identifying their school badges, so we know if somebody's on campus who shouldn't be on campus, also for the adults on campus to make sure that they're wearing those things. None of that is probably going to make you feel any safer, right? Because you're letting your kiddo go to school every day, and that's a terrifying thing as a parent, I'm sure. But please know that this is something that we are actively, consistently thinking about and working on, and thankfully, those threats that you mentioned weren't real, and we know that because the police immediately sprang into action, along with our district admin, and addressed it the night before both of these occurrences happened. And so it's an unfortunate reality that now that is part of our daily or weekly lives as educators, but it is nice to know that those systems are in place. Can they be better? Absolutely. But I do want you to know that we are constantly thinking about ways that we can create a safer space, not just for our students, but our teachers, too. It's a scary time to be an educator or work in a school, just period. So what can we be doing to make everybody feel safe and supported is a question that I think everybody up here, our district staff and the entire board thinks about constantly. So thank you for sharing your concern. I hope you'll keep reaching out to us if you have ideas or suggestions, those are always really, really helpful, but we will continue to make progress. And I think it's, maybe it's time to share, you know, at the appropriate time, another email that talks a little bit about some of our updates and the work that we've been doing on campus, because our school, our site admin have been doing a wonderful job of navigating a lot of new things that we've put into place. So thank you to everybody for all of your comments, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. So responding to public comment, first to Schlossman, I'm going to be asking for a legal opinion on whether or not your commentary on the flag salute, being that it's not an actionable item, is something that is protected. If it is, then absolutely, I will support your First Amendment right to continue to utilize that, but this is, once again, an example of resources that we are spending, because it is nothing but a constant tool of abuse to one member of the board. And I'm sorry, I'm standing up for members of my board when they get abused. We're a team. Even when it doesn't feel like it, I've gone out of my way to cover, because that's what we've got. And we're working actively, and we're working around the clock, Mr. Schlossman, for these kiddos. You're not doing any noble deed that we aren't. So let's just work together and make it more productive, as we've always asked from you. And if not, we'll continue to play the games and do the showmanship, it's fine, it really is. I'm sure people, like five people tune in because of it. But we're not talking about kids. And that's what's wrong with some of your commentary. Whether or not she exercises her right to perform that pledge impacts no child, no learning outcomes, and does not change lives. It is her way of demonstrating her rights and speaking to a larger narrative that isn't So I want to illustrate that for members of the community, because we are responsive. We're not afraid to hear, Lord knows, I'm not afraid to hear criticism. I sit through it all the time. But for you to sit there and to just kind of use it as a tool of abuse, it's just, that time is over. So we'll be asking for a legal opinion on that front, if I can ask for that, as Board President, per board policy, which allows me to do so, I will. Colleagues, if we want to vote on that, you can bring that back at a future agenda item. We did send a letter of acknowledgement and thanks to those donors. Dr. Hill made a phone call himself, and I followed up with him to make sure that that occurred. He did it without me having to follow up, just a heads up. Getting to Ms. Becker, I need to get some background, some additional background on this, so thanks for the flag. I will follow up with Dr. Paramo, it's important, so I was like, hmm, okay, great. So I will be following up, so thanks for the flag, always appreciate it, it's good to see you. Ms. Winston, I can't thank you enough for this, because Judy Heschen's here today, Judy Heschen in the house. One of our most celebrated principals, I think, in this district, longest-standing, for sure, you know, but Judy has this incredible ability to kind of juggle it all, you know, and she'll tell you, I can't let, I can't juggle that today, right? She's just very matter-of-fact. But when I visited, she has always just showed the campus office such beaming energy, you know, and it's so funny, because it's so concentrated, but it's so real. And she can tell you in two seconds how an environment complements the academic learning that's happening there. Ms. Winston, that's how I've gotten to know you, is to come into your classroom. One of those visits I had, Mr. Osif was there, okay? Kindly said, what are you doing all lunch? I'm like, I guess I'm staying here? And he brought me into the auditorium. You know, when you've served on the board for as long as I have now, which is a good chunk, you remember the moments where people's passions met their purpose, you know? And he was like, let me show you this, right? Began to show me how heavy the stage lights were that they found, you know? All of this is original, just a passion for this. And, you know, I think even at that time, I appreciated it, there was something that just kind of said, still yourself and listen to this man. And we tried to get what we could to sign off on different letters to help with grants, and that was certainly good, but he was always just kind of Thomas the Train, he just kept going. And then, when we saw the final contributions came in, I was like, wow. I mean, really just breathtaking. So absolutely, I think, what an amazing gift to be able to give him, because he and his wife deserve to have that story told. Getting stuck under the stage, he talked about it. And he talked about the looniness of him hanging from different things to try and get the, this is the extent to which people go to give these kids the experience of a lifetime. That's our mission. So just thanks for identifying the person who just represents that so clearly. And then to Lenora Aguilera, thank you. Sharon Cuseo, what a powerhouse. She's not here, so I can say all the nice things about her, because otherwise she'd be like, let's go. This is one of the hardest times to lead in public education ever, and she is, you know, and again, not a distinction that she walks around saying, but the highest ranking Latina in this district's history. That's something to be proud of. And her, there were times in meetings, I think Dr. Weisberg, even Dr. Aga Khanian got worried, you know, how much is she carrying quietly, unburdened? Absolutely is she worthy of that. The mentorship she's done for others is also notable, but those are other stories that I can't tell. I can tell you she's made me a better board member, pushed at me, what are you doing, Steve? She's called me in, right? I've talked to her about that, too. Leadership is hard. It comes up with a variety of people and their opinions about it, but these are two phenomenal leaders, and I, as Board President, want to appoint those two committee members, so Ms. Tabbett, if you'll join the Miller Committee, and Dr. Weisberg for the Miller Committee, and then I will join the Committee for Huerta, yes, and Emily as well. There you go. Anybody else want to do Miller? Okay, so it'll be Doc... Former Miller parent and SCUPA instructor, so, and alumni. So we'll have Shar chair it as an alumni, there you go, there you go. So that'll be the breakdown on that committee front, so we can get those committees operating. Is that good with staff? Excellent, I think they're just more than noble. And thank you, Ms. Winston, and we're going to need your involvement. So that's a part of this process, is that we've got to justify why, you know, and Ms. Tabbett and Mr. Fritner did put together a policy that I think speaks to our values, right? And how we get this done. So this is of the community, and then we're carrying forward. So thank you again to Ms. Tabbett for your legacy continuing to act in this meeting. Okay, so those two committees are certainly named. So to Mr. Schultz, it is always privilege, and it is always an honor to be able to represent our community in these offices. I'm laughing, because I came to this dais today, and I was completely thrown off, because somebody sent me a picture, and control, this is me at 12. And, yeah, I know, I'm like, I have hair. I was cute, that's what, yeah, anyway. But this is when I first got involved in city government. It's a good reminder of just how far things have come, just how hard and how good life has been in that time. I have sat in this room for probably 20-plus years, thinking about all the selflessness that it takes to move this community forward. And Tuesday night, when all of my colleagues, at one point or another, chose to diminish my light, I was dehumanized. I never seek to hurt people in this process. I have never sought to leave people out of a conversation. But I certainly felt left out of a conversation when the key item of disagreement between the city and the school district, and it wasn't our city council, let me just tell you, each, almost every single one of them has reached out to me, or at least responded to outreach. It was city staff, and the one point of disagreement on a joint meeting, a resolution on LGBTQ Now, they cited process, I cited principles. Mayor Anthony and I were on the phone three separate times, working our best to try and build an agenda with consensus. I would think a time where our neighboring district has 300 people show up, and elected board members are told to sit under the dais and wait and hope, that that would be an item, as I think the city attorney referenced, of shared mutual interest, and should be a regular item, that could be considered. Mayor Anthony, as we were trying to work this process, as we were trying to find a solution, because I'm not just trying to burn everything down, came back to me, he said, would you, instead of accept, at the advice of the city attorney, a proclamation, a ceremonial proclamation, instead of a resolution that is a joint resolution that has votes cast for it? Can I sign a piece of paper and give you that instead? I'm the first LGBT elected official in this town, and to be told that, told that my rights sidelined, I don't think my rights are better than any of yours, but it is about the moment, who's up against things. We all are, we all have different agenda items, and I've heard from my colleagues, hey, I want to hear agenda items differently moving forward. And you know what, we'll have that conversation, because that's, nobody's seeking to keep people from this, except for the city manager's office. Not only did the city managers, and I'm calling spades spades, because here's the deal, Nick Schultz was here today, in his own capacity, vice mayor. All the council members showed up in their, even to register disagreement. All the council members showed up in their diff, even to register disagreement. That's our process. I can respect that. I cannot respect two unelected officials telling policymakers as elected by this community that you can wait five meetings or so to get this on an agenda. Not okay. Not who we are. I shouldn't have to talk to Justin Hess, who by the way, wasn't in the building that Thursday. He was at a city manager's conference, talking about being city manager without being city manager. Where there's a crisis that's dividing the two legislative bodies here in this home, not okay. To whoever made the decision in the city manager's office not to honor our request to have pronouns listed on our, on our temporary placards, they're pieces of paper, folks. Well, they were already printed, so I'm sorry, you will not be able to have those placards with gender pronouns. Oh, it's not bias. And then to have the city council meeting, where the city attorney omits throughout the duration of the meeting, what the item of disagreement was all about. I've watched that meeting more times because I had just been, I was mentioned again, just under 20 times. Number of times students were mentioned? Zero. If there was one or two, I'm sorry, I missed that one. So I know we have city leaders. I know because they've been there. Let me just tell you, this has been the most productive year, working with city leaders in probably a decade. They have shown up for us personally. They've shown up for us when it comes to the safety and wellbeing of our kids like nobody else has in, in previous generations of leadership. Nick Schultz and Konstantin Anthony walked the sites with us, brought a fire marshal out, and that fire marshal worked with Mr. Cantwell to try and find every solution possible. Didn't throw up a barrier, didn't throw up anywhere. That's the spirit of cooperation. And you know what? They paid for some of our fencing improvements. When has that happened? So we have had the community said, and very clearly to each of us, do better. And each member of this board I know has done better, including me, to extend hands, to offer opportunities to collaborate. And when you see something, when a board offers it, we had an agenda deadline, they had an agenda deadline. We submitted our agendas. The first agenda that we submitted, or the first resolution copy we submitted, was a template. That's what the city attorney refers to when he hears it. I know this is a, a long protracted thing. Theirs was a long protracted thing. So we submitted a template. The city attorney outlined what he felt were limitations that the city had to observe when moving forward with the resolution. We honored those. So we submitted another one that was simplified, that was clarified. By that time, it was too late, was according to his quote. But Mayor Anthony said that the city attorney said to him, that the mayor could, that the city manager could put this on the agenda at any time. And that's the reality. Got it from the mayor, so I'm not, so I am proud to serve this community. I hate being put in this position. And let me just tell you, the lack of dignity in this moment, having to fight for something that also happens to be your rights, in a city that is more than happy to light up City Hall in a rainbow on June, in the month of June, but isn't yet willing to put it on an agenda, at least while I'm board president or while Mayor Anthony's mayor. Because the city manager, again, last night at 7:00 PM said, no, there will not be another joint meeting. We will not schedule a joint meeting between now and the end of the year. This city is not run by just our executives. They are a major component of it. But our city leaders need to step up, in my opinion, in this moment. We didn't have a hard disagreement, and by the way, I never canceled the meeting. They said, let's delay this and come back with more time. I hope our city partners, who have been there for us in a million ways this year, and I am so grateful, and obviously I'd, I'd say otherwise, they showed up for us this year. I wanted this meeting, Dr. Weisberg, who also, by the way, signed off on all of the calls, right? You were there as we worked through this moment. I didn't make these calls unilaterally. I checked in with my team. I communicate directly with the mayor. I communicate directly with the superintendent. That is who I communicate, and, and Dr. Weisberg is the vice president of the board. I stuck to those lines of communications. I expected them to do their jobs. So I hope our city colleagues will meet us there. Three board member, three council members can call a special meeting. I ask that you direct your city manager to call that meeting because we have a lot to celebrate. Looks like maybe Dr. Weisberg will be taking over after me so everybody can like breathe, but there can be a lot done under her leadership potentially. And Vice Mayor Schultz, a lot can be done under his leadership, and there's no reason why city staff and some bias that I feel clearly exist, based on my experience, should be the thing that keeps us from talking. I'm still talking and I'm hurt and I just had everybody attack me and my intentions attacked. Let's show up for the kids. Let's keep students as the number one word that is said at a joint meeting. And let's move forward because we all love this town and it's all worth the investment. So to all those who have called, thank you. To all of our city leaders who have called and engaged, thank you. They have all, in one way, shape or form, done their part. And we've got something we're celebrating here and every single person up here knows it. So thank you all very much for that little bird walk, and then we'll get back to the Thank you. Items 11A, updates on the fiscal crisis and management assistance, assistance team, FICMAT study and fiscal services department review.
President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, Dr. Paramo, colleagues and community. On June 15th, I came before you to share an accounting and budgetary error in our fiscal department. We had over budgeted a line item over the course of about eight months, and that was a very significant error. It eroded our credibility with our partners, both in the classroom and support staff, as well as in this community. I know that you as a board made many commitments of your priorities for our budget and with an understanding of only having limited resources that we in fact had more than we had been communicating. So you made very clear that we need to have not just an internal audit performed, but also bring in the outside watchdogs who could look at this process, ensure that first and foremost, nothing nefarious occurred, but also to get to the root of where we had process failure that allowed this type of mistake to take place. And so in response to that, we contracted with FICMAT, the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team over the summer. They were onsite on October 23rd and 24th. They met with more than 20 staff. They also met with a board member. They have received more than 10,000 pages of documents from us. This is an intrusive process. They are focusing their attention on budget development, budget monitoring, position control, accounts payable and accounts receivable. But within each of those five categories, there are a whole host of, of processes, of people and of documents which they're reviewing. They have given us a preliminary exit interview and preliminary findings. They did confirm that, of course, what we've said previously is, is accurate. There was nothing nefarious. There's no intentional acts that led to this omission, but rather there are a number of system failures, a number of antiquated systems that permitted a climate in which we could have this budgeting error occur. They are going to finalize the report over the next six weeks or so. We anticipate having a report from them in January. We've heard very clearly that we want to have a separate session where the, the FICMAT team will be onsite. They'll be here in person to present their findings. I want to make sure it's understood, both I know the board is aware of this, but for the community, we will see a draft of that report, but the, one of the things that, again, that you made clear was that you did not want the possibility that district staff could change that report, that it was important, again, for the autonomy and independence of this audit, that it was going to be FICMAT's report and not a, a district influenced report. And so that is one of the key attributes of FICMAT. Their reports are not modified at district level and they are all public. So you actually can go on FICMAT's website right now to see the other similar audits that they've done, and ours will reside not just here locally, but the state level through FICMAT's database as well. So I want to just give you in the public that update on where we are in the FICMAT audit process. I also wanted to let you know that we've continued our internal audit of, again, both our staffing and our processes within the business office. During the, the course of this audit, we have found, again, a number of things that need to be improved. We are looking at a few software and database changes. We also have seen things like where we were not following our policies on overtime. And so we've been evaluating the overtime practices and making sure that we are correctly assigning overtime and ensuring proper oversight of that process. This is not directly related to our fiscal department, but I also want to take this opportunity just to publicly acknowledge the embezzlement that was discovered recently in another department, child development. We worked very closely with police department. October 26th is when we first suspected that there was a possibility of something that was not right in the handling of cash within our child development program. Within 24 hours, we had identified the individual we believed was responsible. That individual admitted to that, resigned from the district and was arrested within three days. Obviously, the, the legal process still needs to work itself through, but I just wanted to acknowledge our child development staff, who were the ones who identified this. They were the ones that worked diligently in the initial audit and review of our processes, which I then have also looked at. However, again, just as we did with the budgeting error, we are not allowing the review to stay in-house only, but we are hiring a forensic auditor. That audit is going to be taking place next week and the week after Thanksgiving break. And we expect to be able to have that public report, that public memo ready for the board. We're hoping that it'll be a December publication date. It's possible it'll be in January. Part of that will depend on if during the course of the, the forensic audit work, the scope expands beyond the currently identified scope. So those are the, the brief updates on our findings and the work that's taking place, both in our fiscal department, as well as, again, tangentially related to finances within child development.
Dr. Weisberg.
Just as a point of clarification, the reason that there wasn't a report attached to the agenda is because the report is not yet complete.
Correct.
I just want to make sure people know we're not withholding information. We don't have information yet to share, but this was just a chance for you to update us on where we are in the process. So there wasn't anything left out. You've been very clear about how transparent the actual report will be, but just wanted to reiterate that there's no report yet. That's why it wasn't attached to the agenda.
Correct. This is just simply an update and we're in the process. Again, the report will be ready in January.
And so following up on that, on Dr. Weisberg's point, so Dr. Weisberg has already asked for, the agenda is, you know, a, a meeting to be called on this kind of, in a deep dive kind of fashion. I think we should also be obviously doing kind of a breadcrumbing of the different discussions that are ahead of us as they come to agendas, so that way the public can see and participate in that. The, obviously, the, the embezzlement situation is, is beyond upsetting, you know? Every, we know parents obviously work hard to put their kids through childcare and, and our district works very hard to maintain the trust, to receive those payments and to get them where they need to go so that we fund these programs. So thank you to everybody who's involved in this, who, you know, it's awkward, it's awkward, it's terrible for, for those involved. Our appreciation to them. On the overtime as well, that's an important disclosure. So I want to thank Mr. Cantwell and to Dr. Paramo as well, because the instructions were very clear midsummer. Figure it out. And, and we are finding more and more that, but, but we have gone through these systems enough to go, okay, this has been pretty exhaustive at this point. That's why we've had outside firms come in. We want to make sure that when we're clearing it, we're clearing it. So I want to thank you for the hard work. There are not many people in fiscal services right now.
That's right.
Our operations are impacted by the seasonal flu. We need to make that clear to members of the public. It's an undue burden right now on you all, but we have very serious questions coming in the fall, and we need to be ready for this community, and I, I have not seen people work harder. So to, to ensure we are, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I am going to ask that as a portion of oversight, moving forward, that all oversight or overtime be, come to the board as a part of a report, similar to the personnel report, that it be attached during consent, that the superintendent and business service, like, be authorized up to a certain point before it hits a ratific, you know, a certain runway that is appropriate. But that should be a, a very limited runway at this point, due to the fact of what we've seen so far. So we'll talk more about that through our reports, but I would like to see that come back for board consideration as formal report requirement moving forward. It's just an extra form of, we, we do get the personnel report. The personnel report is, is a very thorough report basically on movements, positions, on changes in status. This is the board's way of approving changes to, to employment, which is primarily the, the operation of the district's administration. But we, we do approve that, and it is a mechanism of the board's oversight. So I'd like to see that for that, if that, without objection from my colleagues. Thank you so much. With that, any further questions on this front? Ms. Ponser Cantwell.
Thank you, President Ferguson. So, Mr. Cantwell, I know we don't have a report yet. I know in, in the, excuse me, I just totally lost my train of thought, but Dr. Paramo and I did an interview with the FICMAT team, it, when they were onsite. For them to really just kind of understand what our perspective was on it, I found them to be very thoughtful. I think one of the things that really stood out from the meeting we had with them was, one, that they had not found anything that was, that indicated that people were behaving badly, that it was truly like a systems and processes problem, and that, you know, I think, Mr. Cantwell, you put it to me this way, like, if you were cryogenically frozen in 1970 and then woke up and wanted to be the director of fiscal services in Burbank Unified, you would not have a different process than you would have 50 years ago. Yeah, you would have to deal with emails, but they would not be doing any of the business, turns out. So I know our processes are, are old, right? And the other point that they made was, you know, processes like these, this work until they don't. And that they can really kind of hobble along for a long time on kind of duct tape and hope, but where it really becomes risky is when you have turnover. And that that is when kind of that, that system doesn't really hold. And so I know part of it is position control, which is really like how we identify who is working for us and whether they have authorization to work for us, whether there's a position available for them. And then I think there's likely to be a lot of systems changes, right? And so one of the things that I would love to see is, my understanding is that we have to work with something that works within the county system, right? And so I say that to say, I know you're doing some research in terms of what systems might work for us for some of these things, especially position control. And we've heard that potentially the city, the county system is not the best one, despite its acronym. So I would love for that to be part of the, the conversation when we do the report, right, is not only what the findings were, but kind of like how, how do we logistically move some of this forward and tactically move some of it forward? Because having done, I didn't do any of it actually, having been near with, while my organization did an implementation of human resources information system and a financials information system, it's, can be very expensive and it has to be very thoughtfully done to make sure that you are using those, using that investment wisely, right? And so would love to see kind of the tactical recommendations from, once we have this report. Thanks.
Thank you. If we can get that operational, right? That's, that's, I think, critical, that, that we're not bringing it back necessarily just for a vote. This is a part of already recommendation that we have received, you know, that you single, you have represented the district in this interview, obviously, but I just, I want us to get it moving, not delay. Sorry if I missed that.
No, I just am trying to, what? Get it moving.
So the, the process, we were talking about the audit.
Yes.
Okay. I, I may, I may have missed that. Thank you, sorry. One of those days, huh? Sorry.
I think, I think I know what you were trying to say. And that was the purpose for Dr. Weisberg's recommendation, that we do this in a separate meeting. meeting, so that we can focus on the minutia. Not just have a big, a big picture, everything's rosy, but no.
Thank you.
Everything's kind of rosy, but we could have more blooms in the flower patch if we did these things. Am I right? Is that where you were headed?
And thank you, Ms. Tabit, for picking up what I was putting down. I need it. Specifically about the systems, that there needs to be shared systems. This is a large deployment. I've worked for tech companies, I've worked for large, in large deployments like this. It's heck. It's, it's just for all of our school sites, for all, it impacts across the board. Ms. Ponsor-Campcar has shared like her experience with this, as she works in educational, it's a nightmare. So what we, what work we can start doing now, Ms. Ponsor-Campcar, Dr. Agarokanian are on the administrative affairs, kind of designated points for this. Let's try and move as much as appropriate before it gets to board to expedite this. And I'm looking at Dr. Weisberg for her nod, but genuinely, like, just so we can keep this moving. I would like notes back to the board when, when, you know, there have been kind of gray area nods. But I think let's, let's expedite this process so we can get as much accountability out and go from there.
I have a question.
Dr. Agarokanian.
Just for clarification purposes, I know that my colleague talked about the systems. But again, just for our audience out there, so if county brings out the best system because we deal with them, we're gonna have to take that system, even if it's gonna be a nightmare to overlay and will cause problems, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think what's, by the way, sorry to add one more piece of feedback, let's get Supervisor Barger's office on the horn now. Like, let's inform her now that there may be a Laco compliance, a Laco challenge here. Because I, I don't want to negotiate on this front. We, I'm sorry, we just secured potentially floating holidays. And the justification to delay that for year after year, after year was a county system, software system, not okay. So that's an example of how it has already hurt this district. We need to get her on the phone and her office on the phone now, so that we are not dealing with this. And if we can, she's coming to our December meeting. So, she is, she's like Santa Claus, she's like, anyway. Thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that we're incorporating them, them in. With that, we are going to, any further questions on that? Obviously not, I think. And moving to Ms. Young, Ms. Young, for our report on our legislative update. Thank you.
Hello, President Ferguson. Good evening, Board, Dr. Paramo. Per the request of the Board, we are providing an update on new legislation. Specifically, we're going to look at Senate Bill 274, which no longer supports suspension or expulsion practices that are related to attendance, tardies, truancies. And we have some practices that we're reflecting on specifically at the Community Day School as they relate to involuntary transfer, which is not suspension or expulsion, but it is in that family. So per the request of the Board, we will take a look at our Community Day School in light of this new legislation. So you, we have a presentation that we can pull up, and if we can get that up.
Control room, if we could get the presentation, that would be lovely. It's a beautiful blue.
It is.
For Burbank High, for sure.
I thought the colors were pleasing and brought a little calm.
Did it bring joy? You bet.
It is big enough to read.
I know, that's what I like about it so much.
So while we are getting that up, Community Day School, let me talk a little bit for our community about what that is and what that means. We typically refer to it as CDS. And so Community Day School is a little bit of a unique thing for a district to have. Not every school district has one. Regionally, we're one of the few, I think, that does have a Community Day School. It serves a unique student population who may have externalizing behaviors or has students who have more specific and acute needs. And so we definitely have a history as a district of caring and investing in these student populations that need special programs. And so I'm appreciative of the time tonight to, to look at these special populations in light of our new legislation. So let's take a look first at our population. The student population at our Community Day School, which we also call CDS, over the period of several years from 1920 on the left to 23, 24, or current enrollment on the right. At the far bottom of each column, we can see what enroll, how enrollment has fluctuated over the past several years. Of course, during the COVID period in 1920 presented a unique challenge. Enrollment dipped following that in 2021 and 21, 22. Our enrollment now is at 25. So we are funded by ADA or Average Daily Attendance. So the number of students in our programs are how we fund our programs. And based on 25 students and the average daily attendance of an 82%, we likely receive about $246,000, $100,000 to fund this program. There are several ways that students can arrive at this specialized program. There's typically a committee of some sort that deliberates on their special needs and makes a decision. That could be through an attend, a School Attendance Review Board process, what we call a SARB, which was, is typically not a first meeting about attendance, but a second or a third, sometimes even a fourth meeting or, or more about attendance. These are very, more severe attendance cases farther down the road could be for many different reasons that we can, you know, review at a different time. Students could also arrive at CDS through a DTRC meeting or a District Transfer Review Committee, where we consider special cases, individual needs, and consider placement via that process. IEP teams or individual education plans for our special education students meet and deliberate and evaluate student needs. Also, the foster and probation systems sometimes result in placement of students in this program. So out of the 25 total students that we have currently at CDS, 11 of them were placed by SARB, nine by DTRC, three through an IEP process, and two are either the result of an expulsion or a foster probation situation. So let's look at who these students are. Seven of the 25 are special education, four of the 25 are English language learners, three of the 25 are homeless or foster students, and 18 of the 25 come from low socioeconomic backgrounds, or families that are more financially challenged. Four of the 25 are Black or African American, six of the 25 are Hispanic or Latino. And you can see district percentages that relate, so we can look at populations that we might consider to be overrepresented when we consider who CDS serves. And there's certainly some reflection that we can do in that regard. Looking at the academic progress with these 25 students and how they are served, we do see them averagely pass one more class each semester than they did at their home school. The student population at CDS has an increased rate of credit completion of 14.5% as compared to their home schools. And last year of the, six of the eight seniors graduated, and the remaining two enrolled in adult school. So that's the status of seniors and grad status. In terms of identified areas of concern, specifically, we're talking about attendance tonight. That is the legislation that elicited our look at CDS. If 11 of the students are placed there because of attendance, four of those 11 have improved since their placement in terms of attendance, having better attendance. Five have worsened their attendance. So unfortunately, it's not addressing what we would want it to address. So if we're using this as a placement to address and improve attendance, which we have done, we're not seeing that result. While we do see slightly better academics, we're not seeing the attendance improve in large part. Suspension, similarly, it's hit and miss in terms of behavioral improvements. Overall staffing, in serving these 25 students, we have the staffing that's listed here on this slide, an administrator, one office staff member. It is a small school. We don't have extensive staffing, four teachers, four paraeducators, a supervisor, a custodian. All of that staffing cost totals to over a million dollars. And this would not include turning on the lights, paying for electricity, those sorts of things. There are other costs not included here. This is simply the staffing salary and I believe benefits. Is that correct? Benefits are included in this figure as well. So that is the overall review of the program, the statistics, the students that we serve, how they arrived there in light with the newer legislation related to attendance. We're unfortunately not seeing this as a practice that we can sustain and continue. And so we're at a point where input and direction is welcome from the Board, because we are reflecting on, you know, the legalities of our practices and also, you know, the results and the outcomes, not being everything we would want them to be, especially for the amount invested versus the amount collected through ADA.
So first, thank you for that report. It's a hard report to deliver just generally, and I think there's many instances, and I've got two colleagues with hands up, so I'll get to them quickly. But it is a hard report. I also want to note for members of the public, this is a district official getting up and saying we're not being effective in a portion of how we're spending money. So this is, what we're talking about is, is this level of transparency, and I want to thank the district's leadership team for getting this vulnerable and for having this conversation with the public. It's important that we have a mature response to it. With that, I saw Dr. Weisberg's hand. I want to go to Dr. Weisberg and then Ms. Tabit, and then Ponsor-Campcar. Does that work? There you go.
Thank you very much. And I first want to just qualify this by saying, we've listed, you know, ADA, projected revenue. This is not, this is not about dollars and cents. This is about whether or not we're serving our students as well as we possibly can. So it's included, but I, we often get criticism, like, this is just about the money. It's not. But it is something that we have to take into consideration. So independent of, of the conversation about CDS, I mean, you mentioned it, but the, the numbers are really staggering when we're talking about low socioeconomic students, our Black and African American students, and our Hispanic, Latinx students. So we're talking about, you know, low socioeconomic at CDS is 72% of their student body compared to 30% of BUSD. We're looking at a slightly smaller but still interesting difference between 16% of Black, African American students at CDS versus 3.5% outside, and then 70% Hispanic, Latino versus 33%. And so the question I do think we need to ask ourselves is, why? Why are students of color disproportionately, what's the word? Represented, thank you, at CDS? What are we not doing to support them? And this is not me blaming blame to anybody. I know how hard our teachers and staff work. This is me asking from a district level holistically, what, what are we doing? What are we not doing? And how do we address this? So that was something that, that jumped out at me a lot. And you brought it up, you know, that if you look again at the statistics about, you know, students that are, hold on, I highlighted it because I'm old, like attendance concerns worsen, or there are attendance worsening, more suspensions, the increase, so it does, you know, it begs the question, why? I think it's, I think it's going to be a challenging, but I think it's an important piece of legislation to no longer be able to suspend kids or shift them because of attendance issues, because we know that there's a million reasons why students are truant or late. But two things spring to mind. One, we have to, I mean, I'm sure we're already thinking about this, but how are we communicating this to our schools? And what interventions are we putting into place when there are serious attendance issues? I know everybody's thinking about it, because this is super new legislation, so I don't expect any answers, because I don't think anybody has them yet. But he, okay. So the, so there are a couple of big bucket questions. One, low SES, socioeconomic, and our students of color at CDS, that percentage, why? How can we better serve these student communities? What interventions are put into place currently at CDS? So we can talk a little bit more about like, what's working, what's not working? And I think the other question I have is, based on this number, if we're looking at the number of students who are there based on suspension for attendance issues, can we serve this student population at Monterey or elsewhere? I know Monterey is doing a phenomenal job. I'm pretty sure that right now there's room. I'm not trying to sort of pawn off, but ask the question, are the sort of supports that these, these kiddos need, are they available at Monterey? Because to your point, it doesn't look like a lot of the interventions are doing what we would like them to do for our student population at CDS. So is there perhaps more available to them at Monterey? So if we're talking about saying, well, if half of our student population at CDS can't be at CDS for the reason that they're there, and we say, okay, well, it's time to shift them because we can't sustain CDS anymore. To your point, we're, we're invested in the care and concern of these kiddos in a major way. So how can we make sure that they don't slip through the cracks? Do we have programs in place elsewhere to support them perhaps in a more robust fashion? That was a lot.
Yeah, we do.
And I, and again, I don't expect answers right now, but these are the big, the big questions that came up for me as I went through the report this week. And thank you for it.
Okay. Next to Ms. Tabit. So if we can, we'll gather questions, so that way, we're talking about, we're talking about shutting down a school.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to give it due diligence and time and respect if we're considering this. It is that big. It's a part of our family. And, and so I want to give, make sure that those questions get answered. And Ms. Young, obviously, she's more than like ready to take those, but I just, I want to make sure we're clear on that. Go ahead, Ms. Tabit, sorry.
You, you sort of argued my point and kind of against yourself, because, well, it is, so, so it's hard for us, because we are human beings and we care about what happens to our kids. But we're in over our heads for $800,000 on a program that we're not sure is doing the best it can for kids. So it is about money, but it's also about kids. And I appreciated your questions about what do we do differently? We used to have, I'll call it a robust population, and we made some changes. We went to PBIS. We did, I don't know, things just got better. PBIS helped. There were a few other things that, that we did along the way at our school site, so we weren't needing to send as many kids.
My understanding is we historically used to have group, more group homes in the city of Burbank, which we no longer have as well. So the population and the demographics, some of our needs historically over the years have shifted and changed.
Right. So then I do think the question is, is what do we do with the 20 or so kids we do have? How can we make it better for them to be successful? The percentage rates for graduation are far better at Monterey than they are here. So we're doing something right there. Totally different model. It's a different kid, but somehow I think that we need to look a little outside the box maybe, about what they're doing at Monterey and how it could be utilized for these children who, who do come with a whole different baggage load of issues and hurdles they have to overcome. I get that. But, you know, we used to think, well, what is the, the district next door doing? How come they don't have these problems? Or maybe they do, and maybe they're bigger, and I, I don't know. But we can look at ourselves for the But we can look at ourselves for this moment, and Mr. Ferguson is correct. We are looking at closing a school possibly. So then the question is also, and I don't, don't say it, Dr. Agakanyan, but we're going to have a school site that we're going to need to utilize somehow.
That's a totally other agenda item, so I just wanted to like rein that in.
Right. But that needs to be part of the question too, then, where do we go with this? Because maybe we have some opportunities with that open space to do something wonderful.
Respectfully, I want to hop in there and say like, let's focus on the families and the kids that are there first right now before we look at the opportunities of the site. Just, I don't want to be insensitive to that, that we're, we're just.
I'm not, but it's a, it's, it's when you have an open school site, you have to be weary of, of that and have plans for it because otherwise there's certain pathways that people have to go down.
I know.
You know, so I just want to make sure that we're aware. I know you are, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And I didn't mean, but I, I just, I want to be close on the Brown Act on things like this especially because this is property consideration.
I think that's part of the, the issue here we need to think about.
Okay. I, I'm, anyway. Ms. Ponsor Campcar.
It's okay to disagree. Thank you.
I don't disagree.
Um, no, I mean, I, I appreciate that, that you brought this forward, right? And I visited CDS near the beginning of the school year, and I do want to recognize that, you know, Mr. Fuentes and that staff are doing the absolute best that they can for those students there. I just, it, it looks to me like the program itself is maybe, is also what needs to change, whether or not the site itself goes through some sort of transformation. Because to Ms. Tabit's point, for forty-four thousand dollars a year in just staffing costs per student, I think we could probably be doing more for these students in terms of outcomes, right? And so, you know, one thing that I'll be asked, or that I would love to see as we think about this is, what are our options for our students that we, we could still send to a place like CDS if there is no CDS to send them to, right? What are our options for programming for those students? Because I do think we need to, and I think we're aligned on this, that these are, are likely our most vulnerable students, right? And certainly the, the demographics say that and the data about them says that, but just the, the reason that they're at CDS is because they've been having a really hard time. And, and I know that staff is, is working really hard, and I want to make sure that they've got what they need to be successful. So I think that would be interesting to know, to Ms. Tabit's point, like what other districts do in this case. I, I know LUSD has a very robust CDS system, but we're not LUSD. And I know there are some districts that don't have any, and they, the students are served by the county is my understanding. And like, what does that actually look like? Because I am going to need to understand what the alternative is for those students in terms of, like, what are we, what are we sending them to if this is no longer an option? And is there an option either at Monterey or something else for them to get the kind of services and support that they need? Because it was interesting, I was reflecting on, the CDS also has a pretty active social media page, and they were recognizing a number of students for improvement. And having been up here now for almost a year, there are now names that I start to recognize. And I just, I, it's really exciting to see, to see those students, to see those students improving, right? And so that's not necessarily what you get from this, and I want to recognize just the, the work that they're doing there and that this is going to be really hard.
So I'm going to hop in then, it was Dr. Agakanyan, then back to Dr. Weisberg for a second round. I think that closing a school is probably our most serious consideration in any kind of budget scenario, in any kind of community impact scenario without a doubt. And, and I think Ms. Tabit's points about, and I could buy everybody, I think, up here obviously, is what, what the fiscal impact is and cost per ratio, you know, the ratios per student and what that looks like. I think that tells one story. I think the challenge is, is that when we're thinking about cutting a school and a piece of our identity away, we should be exhausting all other options first, and we should be demonstrating why. In LCAP considerations previously, that, this is not the first thing that people go to when they think about cuts. And I think we need to find and demonstrate real reason why this should be something that should be exhausted potentially above other cuts. I don't think we've done that, gotten there yet. I think you can make a values call on that front and say, this is where we want to go. We want to make sure those kiddos are taken care of, those students, those young people. Are they taken care of in that county system by the same, at the same level? I, I don't think so. I don't. Are they taken care of by good people at Monterey? You bet. But I want to see what that looks like. There's still a ton of state law, obviously, that relates to community day schools, that they need to be housed within a fence, I believe, on the site. So that's going to have impacts on Monterey campus. But what is the vision for Monterey? It is such a gem. We hear everybody talking about it, right? We're all buzzing. But what is, what is its role as a campus for, for those students who need alternative learning pathways? But can it also be a pioneer in that, not just a reactive force in that? That's what I'm trying to figure out, and state law doesn't seem to give us a lot of freedom in that. But if it can, how do we push that so that we have this kind of long spoken of diamond in the rough that, that kind of gets celebrated and elevated to the level it could be, which is an innovative learning institution? So I want to serve all those, those mouths if we feed them, but I, I think we still have some due diligence to do on that front. I, I do believe the Monterey campuses, or the community day school campus has gotten kids over the finish line. Shocked to hear that there's been eight graduations. We weren't invited to, you know, I haven't seen those, and that story hasn't been told, and that's a little concerning. Eight graduations, you know, I would love to be there to, and, and trust me, I was the only trustee there at one point to hand out diplomas.
They, they graduate at the homeschool.
Great.
They get their diplomas from the homeschool.
So we're not doing graduation ceremonies for, the classroom was. I mean, we had one graduate, and for that, you saw how much work that was. So for that student, it may have been a criss-crun effort, but, yeah, absolutely. So, but that story's not being told either. So let's put that in context if we can. That way, we're not seen as rushing to, to access school just because we're not happy with, like, these are the narratives that run away with it very quickly. And I think everybody's being very thoughtful about this. And, you know, it has been for not, and this has been a topic of conversation for some time as the state law has changed. That's, that's what's putting this school out of business, is the state's approach to this model. They want more kids mainstreamed in classrooms, not segmented and segregated away from, from people and resources. Pretty straightforward, so. And it was Dr. Agakanyan, then Dr. Weisberg, then you.
Yeah, I apologize. It is ten o'clock in interest of time. I would say I'm sure you guys will handle this, come with some creative ideas as well. I think I will just say one thing I'm concerned about, just family, personal experience, language barrier is a big issue. I've, I had a family member basically would skip school, but because his parents didn't speak English, he would just say, everything is fine, and then, you know. So anyways, but I'm certain that Dr. Paramo and the team will come up some creative solutions as well.
Well, we'll, we'll make these decisions together as a team. Dr. Weisberg, you know.
A quick logistical question that may be Mr. Cantwell or Dr. Paramo. So if we hypothetically, the school ends up closing, the staff, our teachers, our paraeducators, everybody else, are they going to have, or will we find places for them within BUSD? Will we be able to do that?
They have seniority rights and bumping rights.
Okay. I just want to make sure that as we continue to talk about this, we're as clear as we possibly can be about how this will impact staff as well as our kiddos. Thank you.
And following up on that point, that does mean the more junior members could be potentially bumped as well. So this is where the hiring freeze that we asked for last board meeting needs to come back to try and, to try and keep as much of that talent here as possible while we kind of begin this process. And Dr. Weisberg's absolutely right, and this is the impacts of a parcel tax not passing, folks. This is what it looks like.
Yes, that report will come on the next board meeting.
Perfect. Ms. Tabit.
In a discussion today with other BUSD employees, we talked about how the future of education is changing and that we may have to really constantly be looking outside the box to do differentiated things that we don't normally do. We work with kids all the time, but some of these kids are affected by extenuating circumstances in their lives that they have no control over. And it may be a time to ask our adult school to help us out and provide some programs if we could encourage family members, close friends that could help these kids along with us to attend classes or a class or a discussion piece so that there's a whole village helping these kids besides just the school site.
And Ms. Tabit, I think that's an excellent point. It's already been brought up in some, in some iteration, and we're starting to explore a little bit of that in, you know, expanding the adult school and how it supports families, but also in LA Valley College and how potentially, for instance, scheduling language classes along the same time as dual enrollment classes. So it's a family affair to go to class, except you go to different, you know, different corners, but.
If you have a single parent who's working.
You bet.
You know, twelve hours a day to keep a roof over people's heads in a fairly safe community, then we need to be able to support those parents as well so that they then can help their kid. And everybody wins. So I don't know if that's the exact answer, but.
Or an online learning model.
It's one way.
You bet. Dr. Paramo.
You have all asked amazing questions, and they're the hard questions, and I understand. I also can't answer all of your questions, and I, I was so glad that you prefaced your questions in, in that manner. This is a topic that has been weighing on me for three months and weighing on district staff. Our focal point is one hundred percent on how to best serve kids. If we can save money in that process, it's just an ancillary benefit, but it's not the focus. And I know you guys know that, but I think it's important that I say that to the community because when you look at the outcomes, I think that we, if we put our heads together and get all our experts together, we might be able to find creative ways that are going to help these kids in a better way with better outcomes. I have a very hard time as a longtime educator involuntarily transferring students to community day school because of attendance. That does not feel okay to me. When we do that, CDS does an amazing job. You can't ask for better employees than the ones that are at a community day school. They have a heart for these kids, and they give them the best they can. But they lose access to culinary arts. They lose access to yearbook and photo. They lose access to sports. And a lot of these things, particularly if we're talking about the attendance kids, a lot of these are the things that get kids to go to school. They got to find their group, their people, and that is part of how you get them to want to come to school. And they don't have that when we put them in a more restrictive environment where it can't be offered simply because they don't have the structure like that. So I think about the population that's there, that's there because of poor attendance, and I feel like we might be able to serve them better in a different way. My recommendation to the board would be, so this might not make sense, but I, let me frame it to you this way. We needed to get this report to you and the data to you to look for direction. At this point, now that we've given you the data and we've created the context, what I would recommend is that we work with our experts at the district, specifically Student Services, Linda Young, working with April Weaver, working with Mr. Fuentes, and get this group together to really talk about how we can best serve these twenty-five kids and this population. And I know we can put something together that will make sense. And with your permission, that's what I'd like to do and bring something back to the board, which would be a collective plan that you guys can look at. We can offer suggestions, we can amend, but give us an opportunity to create that because we haven't, and I'd like the opportunity to do that.
So without objection, I think that's the direction, but can you give us a timeline on when you would first check in with some outcomes?
ASAP, as soon as possible. We would be getting a group together, you know, after the holiday, have something, a preliminary report back to you in the last meeting in December.
Okay. I, I, it could be as, it could be as, let's say, January. Like, I, I wanted to ask more or less like, you know, what time is appropriate? But this is going to be something we need to frontload the community with as much as possible. If this is going to be the route we're going to go. So that's all I want to do on that front. And without objection, it sounds like that's the, and then Ms. Ponsor Campcar had her end up.
Yeah, I just, I had one kind of clarifying question because, you know, this came out of a question about legislation, and so I just want to get really clear on, we had twenty-five students that are there right now, and so if we're looking at the, the current placements map, right? So how many of these students would be eligible to attend CDS if that law were in place now? Is it just the students that, the eleven of twenty-five that would be pulled out? Or is it, okay. And I think one of the other pieces is, to Dr. Paramo's point, was the nine of twenty-five that were involuntary transfers that were not attendance based, right? Yours, I think one of the other possible solutions, right, was like a interdist, like a transfer to another, like they are eligible to go to either the other comprehensive high school or to Monterey, is that right?
That, that is the potential, sure. A lot, a lot of districts who don't have community day school, that is their solution.
Okay. And then the students who are there via their IEP, the cert, because I know, like, one of the staff members, they have like a school psychologist that's on site, like, do we think, you know, and this is maybe not an answer you can give me now, but like, are we able to offer those similar services either at Monterey or by creating kind of a, like a, you know, concentration at one of the, one of the other high schools?
Yes, we have some ideas about that.
Okay.
I just need to work them through to be able to present them to you.
Yep, that's fine. I just, I couldn't remember whether the, it was twenty or eleven that would, wouldn't be there right now. So thank you, I appreciate that.
And echoing that, this is a policy change that is now being recognized by this superintendent and this administration. So I, I need that to be emphasized because that is the power of new leadership, I think, in many ways, and new approaches and philosophies on education. And I think that that's very aligned with where this board is, is, is asking us to go, to give students the most connected experience possible while also being fiscally responsible. With that, any other commentary? With that, thank you very much, Ms. Young. We'll go to the action items for the meeting. Item twelve A, this is adoption of resolution fifteen for the exemption to the separation from service requirement pursuant to section two four two, one four point five, or two six eight, one two of the education code for CalSTRS members. Dr. Agakanyan.
Board of Ed, Board of Education moves, Board of.
You turned it off.
Adopt resolution fifteen for exemption in the separation from requirement pursuant to section twenty-four, one four point five, and two six eight, one two of the education code of CalSTRS members as presented.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Agakanyan, seconded by Ms. Tabit to adopt resolution fifteen. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's move forward with the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. On to item twelve B, approval of early notification incentive for the Burbank Teachers Association, or BTA, member who chooses to retire or separate at the end of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. So this is again, the early notification incentive, not a golden parachute quite yet, but anyway, Ms. Tabit?
Yes, thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve the thousand-dollar early notification incentive for any Burbank Teacher Association BTA member who chooses to retire or separate at the end of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year by submitting an irrevocable resignation effective on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, not to exceed forty thousand dollars as presented.
Second. Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan to move forward with the incentive for notification. Do we want to do a quick, that's pretty much top line, but Mr. Cantwell?
Sure. So just as a reminder, on June twenty-second, you adopted the budget for this current fiscal year. As part of that, you also adopted a resolution directing staff to develop a fiscal stabilization plan, which the county required because of a six-million-dollar hole that we had to fill in the third year of our budget, meaning that we had to reduce expenditures by six million. by $6 million in order to remain fiscally solvent in the third year. So we've been working very closely as an admin team, as well as with our employee associations to identify potential expenditure reductions. One of the areas where we know is going to be affected is our teacher assignments, the overall FTE. We worked very closely with BTA this year at negotiations at the table, looking at a variety of priorities of our teachers, as well as looking at, again, ways that we can find to reduce our overall FTE, to reduce the expenditures necessary that the county is requiring. And so we know that we will be likely reducing our FTE, our teacher FTE, full-time equivalent, by about 25 staff. The state has a legal process for timing of when those reductions are noticed to our employees and when they become effective. March 15 is a really critical date where we have to notify employees who are at risk of potentially being laid off due to a reduction in staffing. And so our goal by this early notification incentive is to help us have the best information we can to know just how many individuals are at risk of layoff versus how many positions may be reduced through attrition. So we know that $1,000 is not going to likely shift someone's decision making if they were planning on retiring a year from now or two years from now. That won't, that's not motivation to change the timing of retirement. What it is motivation to do is to notify us sooner. Because the typical thing that our faculty will do is, you know, for a variety of reasons, they may wait until March, April, May, or even June, after the school year is over, to actually notify us of their intent. And at that point, we already had to notify other faculty of their risk of losing their job because we had to reduce the overall workforce. So the reason for this early notification incentive is to help us be able to plan toward that March timeline for the possibility of reducing positions.
Ms. Ponsor Campcar.
Thank you, sir. So one, so the reason this is important, in my estimation, is that if we know who is retiring, then we're not going to be giving reduction in force notices to our young, basically our newest teachers, right? And as someone who got one of those notices in my first year of teaching, what happens then is you start looking for a job, right? And you may find a new job because you are worried that you are not going to have a job the next year, right? And I think we want to minimize losing that talent that I know our team has worked so hard to bring in, if we can just find out earlier from folks that they are retiring. I think that's super important. Now, I did manage to stay at my school the second year. But I didn't know that until very late in the game, right? And so I think it's, you know, I know from personal experience that that is, it's really disruptive. And it's really disruptive. It's essentially disrespectful, I think, to our teachers, too. If we can know better about who is retiring and be able to hand out fewer notices, that's that's more respectful to our staff.
Seems to be a common theme of let's be respectful. So thank you. And and staff kind of introducing that theme in an ongoing way. Ms. Tabit?
To add to that, because I've seen it happen, it it sends teachers into a panic because they don't, how are they going to support themselves in the coming year? And does that mean relocating? Can they find a job next door? And sometimes, because of this, we lose teachers because they it's too stressful. And they go into other fields where they can just have a job and keep them. And we're not at a time point where we can lose any teachers. They need to stick to it so that we can continue as our budgets allow other districts to fill positions when there's a teacher shortage. So it is, the respect part is important. So thank you for acknowledging that. Yeah, I think it's a great thing.
Dr. Weisberg?
No.
Okay, great. With that, thank you to everybody who, again, is being crafty on this front to help us get to, again, more responsible and compassionate approaches. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero. Again, moved by Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aragornian. Onto item 12C, approval of interagency participation agreement with the Alliance Schools for Cooperative Insurance Program.
President.
Yeah.
I move that the Board of Education approve the interagency participation agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and Alliance for School for Cooperative Insurance ASCIP effective January 2024 to January 2025 shall be effective yearly unless terminated by either party on advanced written notice as
Delighted.
Delighted in a term of agreement as presented.
Second, moved by Dr. Aragornian, seconded by me. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Onto item 12D, approval of 100% childcare fee reduction for unduplicated students paid by Expanded Learning Opportunities Program for Around the Bell, Boys and Girls Club of Burbank from November 17 through June 30, 2024. So staff on deck to get a quick presentation on this. I'll get a motion.
Mr. Board President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we approve 100% childcare fee reduction for unduplicated students paid by Expanded Learning Opportunities Programs for Around the Bell and Boys and Girls Club of Burbank from November 17, 2023, through June 30, 2024, as presented.
Second, I will move, I will second it. I'm jumping in there now to get this moving. So thank you, sir. Few more meetings, don't worry. So moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by myself for a five oh vote, or for discussion. Can we get a presentation on this briefly? Just a subject.
The approval of this action item would allow us to go ahead and pay 100% of childcare fees for unduplicated students who are students, who are our free and reduced lunch students, English learners, our foster and homeless students in the Boys and Girls Club program and in the Around the Bell program, all paid for by a grant, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP.
Obviously, a big win. Go ahead.
Can't remember. Do you? No, no, I remember my question. I can't remember the the rule. If families, so this, could this be another incentive for families to fill out the free and reduced? Yes. Okay.
But who's responsible for that?
And and is it ongoing throughout the year? Is there a time period? Or can somebody just say, yeah, no, what? Let's say that someone went ahead and applied and got approved in January, we would go ahead and start with their fee reduction immediately.
So that's an E news.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Great, great concept. Great concept. Okay. So there'll be, and an amendment to the motion would be that that we get this out. So thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Great question, Ms. Tabit. Ms. Tabit, any questions? Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries five zero, and another good thing for kids. Onto item 12E, right? Yes, 12E, ratification of agreement for professional services out of fiscal services.
For President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we ratify the agreement for professional services, fiscal services, as presented.
Second. Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aragornian. Any further discussion? Again, this is more of the outside help that is coming in to give us independent kind of visibility over our financial reviews. So thank you to that. Ms. Tabit?
Do you think, and I maybe I missed it, I wasn't paying attention, do you need to read the rest of it? Because there's, just for transparency, there's some pretty important stuff in that motion?
12E.
Or are we okay? Did I skip something?
Yep.
I'm at 12E?
Yes, you're at 12E. I so
I just didn't hear.
Sure. I I'm I'm okay with waiving the rest of the reading on this. It does include an account string. And the only reason why I'm supportive of that, Ms. Tabit, is because this has been a posted agenda for 72 hours, at least. And it's gone out via E news. So I just, I'm okay with the waving of the rest of it. But No, but we've been trained otherwise, the, you know, that generation. So a board member, so it's just, anyway, it's new and it feels uncomfortable. But anyway, nonetheless, it helps us out. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries five zero. Onto the next item, which will may also include the waving of a reading. So ratification of agreement for professional services out of fiscal services.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we ratify the agreement for professional services between Burbank Unified School District and Noam Yeloch Manion to provide services and accounts receivable not to exceed $15,960 effective November 3, 2023, through January 31, 2024, as presented.
Second, moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aragornian, a twist of a full reading. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Dr. Weisberg?
I just wanted to, as a point of clarification, so people may say, why are we hiring these people to help? Well, we've had vacant positions for a very long time. We desperately need assistance, please correct me if I'm wrong, in this area, and it's still a cost savings because these positions have gone unfilled for the entire year. So while there is a monetary amount, it is significantly less than it would have been, although we would have loved to have had full-time people in this role. Is that?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do believe that we are going to be getting a report back on the contracted agencies we're working with for different needs. So that will be a more comprehensive discussion. But good flag, Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero. Onto item 12F. Wait, no.
Gee.
Yep, we're at gee, folks. Ratification of agreement for professional services from fiscal services, all lovely when it's three back to back. Go ahead.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we ratify the agreement for professional services between Burbank Unified School District and
Shea Luah?
Shea Lu, I apologize.
Yeah.
Shia.
Shia.
Shia Lu, to provide services and accounts receivable not to exceed $15,960 effective November 3, 2023, through January 31, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Doc, or Ms. Ponsor Campcar. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four zero. Onto item 12H, noting that Dr. Aragornian stepped out. Adoption of Board Policy 6142.4 Service Learning/Community Service Classes. Can I get a motion on this item?
Ooh, ooh, me, me, me.
Yep.
This one's awesome.
The opera singer.
Me, 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 me. Oh, I just lost everything. Okay. I move that we adopt Board Policies 6142.4 Service, oh, no, everything's opening up. 6142.4 Service Learning/Community Services Classes as presented.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Ms. Ponsor Campcar. To to adopt this policy, this was direction previously. Dr. Prama, if you can give a brief background on this?
Yes, this is a good catch by Assistant Superintendent Sharon Casao. We had already given direction about service learning as a diploma requirement. However, when we updated policy, we did not update the correction or amendment on that. So this is just to solidify what we had already been in practice since last year.
Okay. Thank you very much for that background. Any additional questions on this? This was a good call out and a good piece of feedback. I know Dr. Weisberg has heard about this. I certainly have heard about this. I'm sure everybody has on some level. So thank you for this. There are former board members watching who fought hard to get this policy in place. I want to acknowledge that. But but just the demands have changed. So with that, we will move to I will move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries four zero. Onto item 12I, Amendment of the 2023-2024 Regular Board of Education Meeting Dates. I will move it.
Okay, second.
Myself, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Any further discussion? So we, yeah.
Yeah, you added the meeting back. Just clarification, just explain.
Sure, we had blocked out the meeting because we anticipated that CSBA conference would be that week. And it actually turned out that it was the week before. So we wanted to add this meeting back on the agenda to conduct regular business.
And and this was a decision made by two board members that we both talked about that said, hey, we are having a lot of fiscal news come back. And this would give Fiscal Services a number of opportunities to agendize conversations related to the beginning of our budget process, to FICMAT and other and other updates. So it was seen as kind of the more humane schedule.
It's, is this also for the first interim to come back as well? Because isn't there like a conflict with the, wouldn't there normally be, it would like the second meeting would be too late and the first meeting would be too early, that kind of thing? Or no? Am I imagining that?
So
December 21st, right? Doesn't it need to go back to the county by the 15th? I imagine.
Yes, that's correct. December 15 deadline for first interim be approved and sent to the county.
With that, thank you, everybody. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries five zero. On with Dr. Aragornian returning. Onto item 12J, Acceptance of Gifts.
Ms. Tabit?
Ms. Tabit?
At the request of Dr. Aragornian, I would like the Board President to take formal action, accepting the following gifts to the district.
Moved by my Ms. Tabit, seconded by Thank you, Ms. Ponsor Campcar, to adopt the gift report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. And I will find our gift report in this lovely assortment that It's good. In a list that is, that goes into double lettering in terms of sequencing to remind us of the season of giving that we are all in and that all schools can be given to. We want to thank the following donors for their contributions to the district, to the Blackbod Giving Fund, which has donated $384, $384.62 to be used at Dolores Worthen Middle School. We thank you. To the Arts and Education Foundation, who has donated $2,765 to be used towards film and television production, DSLRs, cameras, and sporting equipment, supporting equipment, not, geez, this is going to be a long one, folks, at John Burrows High School. To the Arts and Education Foundation, who has donated $3,235 to be used towards assemblies at Providencia. To the Foundation, who has donated $3,685 to be used towards VMA, supporting our singers at John Burrows High School. To the Blackbod Giving Fund, which has donated $192.31 to be used at Dolores Worthen Middle School. To Greg Chambit, who has donated $300 to be used towards Outdoor Science School at McKinley. Yasmin Sains, who has donated $300 to be used towards Outdoor Science School at McKinley. To Alex Castro, who's donated $300, along with Anmar Najib, Brenda Cortez, who also gave $300 to William McKinley Elementary School. To Half the Sky Entertainment, who has donated $1,000 to be used towards Outdoor Science School at McKinley. To Angelica Posos, who has donated $300 to McKinley for Outdoor Science School. To Elsa Gargaza, who has donated $340 to be used at Outdoor Science School. To Dasha Terry, who has donated $100. These are all for Outdoor Science School at McKinley. Tracy Shaw, Tivia Sally, who have both donated $300 to Cecilia Ani Garcia Wallenchuk, $150 for Outdoor Science School. To Tammy Lynn Williams, who's donated $300 for Outdoor Science School. Olivia Way, who's donated $300 to be used at Outdoor Science School. Brian Milment, who's donated $450 for Outdoor Science School at McKinley. Benjamin Benjamin Strather, who's donated $600 to be used at Outdoor Science School. To Leah Forzan, who has donated $300 to be used at Outdoor Science School. To Matthew Hayley, who has donated $150 for McKinley's Outdoor Science School. It's a bumpin' party at McKinley's Outdoor Science School. Yeah. I'll be here. Lopez Ayala LLC, who has donated $300 to Erica Macias, who's donated $150 to be used at Emerson's for for school supervision over at Emerson. Breaks up the party about Outdoor Science School, but nevertheless, a great donation, and we're thankful for it. To the Arts and Education Foundation, who's donated $362 to be used towards math stackers at Bret Hart Elementary School. What, I want to see a math stacker immediately. Thank you. The Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, who has donated $2,565 to be used towards Picture Perfect Edison Arts Wheel at Edison Elementary School, obviously close to the chairwoman's heart. And to Vim Mahadvian, but I butchered that. If I butchered that, my apologies. Please let me know, and I'll get it better next time. Belinda Sunu, who has donated $250 to be used at the principal's discretion at John Muir Middle School. To the Arts and Education Foundation, who has donated $300 to be used towards the diversity library for Miss towards the diversity library for Miss Stevens John Muir Middle School, at John Muir Middle School, and lastly, to the Foundation, who has donated $4,000 to be used towards Coach Germain Markosian at John Muir Middle School. Obviously, this speaks to a number of things. One, we're getting better at getting payments in through the right cycle, and that, that's been really critical. So thank you to Fiscal Services staff again, and to site staff who've been driving that, and McKinley, I see you in this report, driving outdoor science donations through the proper procedure, just thank you, thank you.
They weren't even going to outdoor science school, so look where we've come. This is awesome.
Oh, the places we'll go.
Oh, yes.
Okay. With that, we'll move to consent counters, items 13A through S.
Board President Ferguson.
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda, items 13A through 13S, as presented.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Agarconian, to approve, adopt items 13A through S. Any further items or items which board members wish to pull? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. We have consolidated, as we said earlier in the agenda, the period of public comment for agenda items and non-agenda items, so we are, we've concluded our meeting for our business of this meeting, but we do adjourn tonight, this night's meeting in memory of Janet Sterns, Cara Takahuchi, and Tom, Tommy Sanchez. And retirements, one second. Thank you to Ms. Ponsor Campcar and, it's right, like the right wing. Not, not in that way. Just stepping in, right? Like, you know, it'll be great. To Robert Alcantara, who's a custodian at Burrows, who began his service in 1990. Thank you. And we celebrate your service and, and wish you a very happy retirement. With that, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.